Testing.
Good morning. I am Ward Four Councilmember Janice Lewis George, Chair of the Committees Committee on Facilities and Family Services. It is eleven twelve AM on Thursday, November second, two thousand and twenty-three, and we are holding this hearing via a hybrid format. Public witnesses are testifying under the Zoom online platform, and government witnesses are testifying here in Room five hundred, the John A. Wilson Building. This hearing is also being broadcast live on my website at janicewardfour.com backslash live. Here are some brief reminders about the committee's protocols for witnesses participating virtually today. All witnesses participating in the Zoom webinar are currently listed as attendees. When it's your turn to join a panel for testimony, I will call your name, and a member of my staff will promote you to be a panelist. If you wish to activate your video while you testify, you need to click the button in the toolbar at the bottom of the screen that looks like a video camera. Representatives of bona fide organizations will be given five minutes to testify. Unaffiliated public witnesses will be given three minutes to testify. When your time is up, I will ask that you please conclude your remarks so that we can stay on schedule. We will be calling up witnesses in several panels, and council members present will have seven minutes to ask each panel questions. If you have any technical issues during the hearing, please notify my staff either via the Q and A function in Zoom or by sending an email to facilities@dc council.gov. All testimony and prehearing documents that have been submitted are available now on the council's hearing management system. Witnesses are reminded to please submit a written copy of your testimony for the record by either uploading it, your testimony to the council's hearing management system, or emailing facilities@dc council.gov. The record for this hearing closes at five PM on Thursday, November ninth. I will begin with an opening statement and then acknowledge any colleagues who may be present. We are here today to discuss three bills relating to the welfare of the children of the District of Columbia. B twenty-four dash forty-three, the Losing Outdated Violence Exceptions Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-three, also known as the Love Act. B twenty-five dash two four-three, the Child and Family Services Agency Investigation Completion Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-three. And B twenty-five dash four six four, the Grandparent and Caregiver Subsidy Eligibility Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-three. First, B twenty-five dash forty-three, the Love Act repeals the nineteen sixty-six religious exception to ensure that the same definition of neglect applies to all district parents. A child is neglected when a parent refuses or is unable to assume responsibility for the child's care, control, or sustenance, or if the child is left without proper parental care or control necessary for their physical, mental, emotional health, and the deprivation is not due to the lack of financial means. However, in nineteen sixty-six, prior to Home Rule, Congress prohibited the district's Child Welfare Agency from intervening when a parent claims to have a religious reason for refusing medical care for their children. As a result, a child under treatment solely by spiritual means through prayer currently cannot be found to be a neglected child. The district is an extreme outlier in this policy. Sixteen states allow a court to order medical treatment, and sixteen others have no religious exception to neglect laws whatsoever. The district is joined by only Georgia and Mississippi in prohibiting any state intervention in the death or disability of a child. Tragically, the majority of children prevented from receiving medical treatment under current religious exception law die from treatable conditions. I am grateful to Ward One Councilmember Brianna Doe for introducing this bill aimed at undoing the current policy that endangers the health and safety of children of the District of Columbia. Second is B dash twenty-five two four-three, the Child and Family Services Agency Investigation Completion Amendment Act, which extends the timeframe for completing most abuse and neglect investigations from thirty to forty-five days. This bill establishes exceptions for allegations that involve child fatality, sex trafficking, or or care in foster home group home or licensed daycare facilities. In these cases, the deadline would be extended to sixty days. The stated goal of this bill is to improve the quality of abuse and neglect investigations by providing social workers with enough time to fully collect information and provide services to district children and families. During today's hearing, we will examine if and why the extended deadlines are necessary and whether additional time would improve the quality of CFSA investigations. Finally, B twenty-five dash four six four, the Grandparent and Caregiver Subsidy Eligibility Amendment Act, which I co-introduced with Ward Five Councilmember Zachary Parker, expands eligibility for the Grandparent Subsidy Program and Close Relative Caregiver Program. These programs enable grandparents and close relatives to receive subsidy payments to cover the cost of their care and custody of a child who is not their own. We know how beneficial it is for children to stay with family rather than enter the foster system whenever possible. We also know how beneficial it is for children to grow up in financially stable homes. It is not just beneficial for the individual kids and families, but the district as a whole. When our children are safe, the district is safer. When our children are healthy, the district is healthier, and when our children thrive, the district thrives with them. However, during performance and budget oversight hearings early this year, we heard from families who are financially struggling to keep these kids and young people thriving. Caring for a child is not only incredibly meaningful and can be difficult, it is also expensive. From food to utilities, from medical appointments to housing, from clothing to school supplies, providing a child everything they need to be safe, healthy, and happy costs a lot of money, especially with inflation and interest rates as high as they are. The financial burden is especially hard on our senior caregivers, many of whom are not working and are on a fixed income. I am committed to helping our hero caregivers create an environment in which these young people can truly thrive being their best selves. By raising these programs' income eligibility threshold from two hundred percent of the federally defined poverty level to three hundred percent, we can give many more grandparents and caregivers much-needed assistance to help mitigate the high cost of caring for the kids they are keeping out of the foster system. These kids deserve nothing less, and the district deserves nothing less. I want to thank my councilmember Zachary Parker, Ward Five Councilmember, and his policy team for their work and leadership on this effort. I also want to remind all witnesses not to discuss the details of other people's personal cases and circumstances. It is, of course, all right to talk about your own experiences, but please respect the privacy of others, especially minors, and refrain from disclosing personal identifiable information of others. At this time, I want to check to see if my colleagues are here yet. I know Councilmember Zachary Parker had to be unfortunately at a funeral this morning of a young person who was unfortunately killed here in the district, and so when he comes, we will absolutely stop and have him come do his opening statement. So with that, I will now turn to our first panel of public witnesses. I'd like to invite up the first panel of witnesses, Stephanie McLennan, the Deputy Director of DC Kincare Alliance, Haley Hoff, Staff Attorney, Legal Aid DC, Robin Swanson, Supervising Attorney for DC Volunteer Lawyers Project, and Jabrin Eubanks, Political Organizer, eleven ninety-nine SEIU. Thank you all for being here. If I mess up your name, please just feel free to correct it. And if you have a specific pronoun, please let me know so that I can refer to you appropriately. Thank you. First up, we have Stephanie McLennan. Good morning, Stephanie, and you may begin your testimony.
Good morning, Chairperson Lewis George, Councilmember Parker, and members of the Committee on Facilities and Family Services. My name is Stephanie McClellan, and I am the Deputy Director of DC Kincare Alliance. Our mission is to support the legal, financial, and related service needs of relative caregivers who step up to raise children whose parents are not able to care for them due to COVID- nineteen, mental health and substance use disorders, incarceration, death, abuse, and neglect, or deportation. Approximately twenty-two thousand black and brown DC children are living in kinship care arrangements, representing about twenty percent of all DC children of color. In the five years since our founding, we have helped over seven hundred and ninety relative caregivers raising more than one thousand DC children in over one thousand legal matters. We also have successfully advocated for seven changes to the caregiver program laws. This would be the eighth if enacted. DC Kincare Alliance is a member of the Fair Budget Coalition, and we support budget priorities and policies that alleviate poverty in the District of Columbia. I want to thank Chairperson Lewis George and Councilmember Parker for cosponsoring the Grandparent and Caregiver Subsidy Eligibility Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-three that would amend the Grandparent Caregiver Program and Close Relative Caregiver Program by raising the income eligibility threshold to three hundred percent of the federal poverty level. I particularly want to thank Councilmember Parker for meeting with relative caregivers in his office this summer, listening to what they had to say and honing in on a concrete way to make their lives better. We note that even at three hundred percent of FPL, a family in DC is still having a difficult time making ends meet as the FPL does not account for different costs of living standards in different jurisdictions. The FPL is calculated in the same way for someone living in rural West Virginia as it is for someone living in DC, even though the cost of living here is dramatically higher. The federal poverty line has failed to keep up with increases in median income for decades. The FPL reflects the national consumption patterns from when it was developed in the nineteen fifty's. However, our national consumption patterns from the cost of healthcare, housing, and childcare have increased significantly. The FPL has not yet caught up. Because of this, the Shared Humanity Project has developed an alternative to the FPL called the National Poverty Plan Standards, which are based on fifty percent of local median income and adjusted for household size. The NPPS is a more accurate way to measure poverty because it takes into account certain factors such as local costs of living. Our relative caregivers who raise children they were not expecting to raise are heroes. Even though informal kinship caregivers are caring for many children who would otherwise enter the foster care system, they are not entitled to the foster care subsidy, which does not have any income eligibility requirements. As DC relies more heavily on relatives to raise children outside the foster care system, it should work to ensure the safety and stability of these kinship families. DC's relative caregivers are primarily women of color who live in wards seven and eight. Most live at the economic margins of our society even before they are called upon to raise a relative child. Many report a significant disability that prevents them from working. The children who come into their care arrive with nothing but the clothes on their back, and relative caregivers have to scramble to buy food, clothing, shoes, toiletries, bedding, and even a bed. The upfront and ongoing costs of having a child come into their homes unexpectedly are great, and our kinship caregivers do not have savings or other resources available to cover these costs. Often, they wind up falling into poverty with no money to pay for rent, food, heat, water, or electricity. The current cap on household income penalizes caregivers who still live in poverty but make a little bit over two hundred percent of FPL, mostly because they receive SSI for a disability or a social security check. We need to provide a foundation for caregivers to help them stabilize the children in their care. Only by doing so will this lead to meaningful change for the community as a whole. We know that there are devastating impacts for children growing up in poverty. Advancements in neuroscience have made it possible to demonstrate that poverty disrupts the developing brain architecture, which leads to significantly lower educational achievement, earnings, and overall health, as well as a disproportionately higher rate of developmental delays and learning disabilities. And research has found that there is a dose-response pattern that outcomes are worse the longer the children are exposed to poverty. These studies posit that interventions aimed at increasing the incomes of families with children can alter the link between childhood poverty and deficits in cognition and academic achievement. This bill will help reduce poverty by making the GCP and CRCP subsidies available to more relative caregivers in need so that they can better support the vulnerable children in their care. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We have actually now been joined by Councilmember Zachary Parker, and so I'm going to allow him to give his opening statement and then resume with panelists, and then I will have some questions for this panel. So if you could stay on, Stephanie, that would be great.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis George, for holding today's hearing on these important bills. And thank you to the advocates and neighbors who have and will continue to provide testimony. As a member of this committee, I am looking forward to taking up these measures and making sure we implement them into law. We are here to address the critical issues outlined in three pivotal bills that have the potential to significantly impact the welfare and support systems for our most vulnerable populations. As we delve into the specifics of Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four-three, Bill twenty-five dash zero two four-three, and Bill twenty-five dash zero four six four, it becomes apparent that the fundamental essence of family care and protection lies at the heart of our deliberations today. Firstly, Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four-three that I co-introduced signals an essential step towards rectifying a historical discrepancy in our child neglect policies. By repealing the religious exemption to the district's definition of child neglect, we uphold our commitment to safeguarding the well-being of our children irrespective of any religious affiliations. This move reflects our dedication to providing a secure environment for all children free from neglect or harm. Secondly, with regards to Bill twenty-five dash zero two four-three, the proposed extension of the timeframe for completing abuse and neglect investigations is a moral imperative. Recognizing the complexities involved in such cases, the extension to forty-five days and in specific instances to sixty days ensures that thorough investigations are conducted without compromising the urgency of certain critical situations. We are resolute in our commitment to the thoroughness and efficiency in safeguarding the welfare of our children. And lastly, Bill twenty-five dash zero four six four, the Grandparent and Caregiver Subsidy Eligibility Amendment Act of twenty-three that I introduced alongside Councilmember Lewis George raises the Grandparent and Caregiver Subsidy Program's income eligibility threshold to three hundred percent of the federally defined poverty level. This bill acknowledges the vital role that grandparents and extended family members play in providing stability and care for our youth. This amendment not only recognizes their valuable contributions, but also aims to alleviate the financial strain often endured by those who step up to provide nurturing homes for children in need. In fostering a holistic approach to the well-being of our children, we must acknowledge the critical role that these caregivers play in their lives. The passing of this bill signifies our commitment to supporting these unsung heroes and ensuring that they have the resources necessary to provide a nurturing and stable environment for our future generations. As we move forward in conclusion in this hearing today, let us keep in mind the imperative responsibility that we hold as stewards of the and for the welfare of our children and families. And so with that, Chair Lewis George, I look forward to continuing with testimony and engaging on these bills with our government witnesses. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Parker. And when you were not here, I just wanted to give credit and due to your amazing policy staff and you as well for your leadership in working through this legislation and meeting with constituents as well. Next up, we have Haley Hoff.
Good morning. Good morning, Councilmember Lewis George and Council Committee members. My name is Haley Hoff. I'm a staff attorney at Legal Aid DC, and I use she/her pronouns. Legal Aid DC submits the following testimony in support of Bill two-five dash zero four six four, the Grandparent and Caregiver Subsidy Eligibility Amendment Act of two thousand and three. Legal Aid supports increasing the income eligibility limits for the grandparents and caregiver subsidy from two hundred percent to three hundred percent of the federal poverty guidelines because we have witnessed the impact that financial support has on low-income families in our client community. We also urge the council to remember that low-income parents also need financial assistance, and we should make sure that our policies and programs do not privilege one type of family structure over another. The Grandparent Caregiver Subsidy provides crucial support to families in which a child is being raised by a grandparent. And similarly, the Close Relative Caregiver Program assists those raising their siblings, children of siblings, and cousins. Expanding eligibility in these two programs would create a more expansive safety net for children and low-income families who rely on these benefits during what can be a very stressful time for children and their families. According to the Center on Budget and Policy Priorities, providing cash assistance to families experiencing poverty can improve children's health and academic achievement. And cash assistance to families struggling to make ends meet enables them to afford necessities such as rent, utilities, personal hygiene products, and school supplies. And as Councilmember Lewis George stated, programs such as the Grandparent and Caregiver Subsidies help make it possible for children to stay with family members and their community rather than being placed in foster care where they cannot, when they cannot live with their parents. For example, Legal Aid assisted a client whose daughter suffered from a massive stroke, requiring her to move into an assisted living facility in Maryland. And as a result of this tragedy, Legal Aid's client became the primary caregiver for his granddaughter. The Grandparent Caregiver Subsidy helps him care for his granddaughter, including providing her with clothes and enabling her to visit the assisted living facility in Maryland to see her mother. In this case, the GCP subsidy both supported our client and his grandchild while providing him with the resources he needed to make sure that the child was able to maintain a relationship with her mother. Thus, expanding eligibility through this amendment would improve the lives of more district children. We also believe that district children should have access to sufficient support regardless of family structure or who their caregiver is. Inconsistent with providing adequate support to all families in need regardless of family structure, we also urge the council to expand eligibility for those families that fall outside of the grandparent or close relative caregiver role, particularly households in which children are being cared for by their parents. For example, expanding eligibility and benefit amounts for parents applying for temporary assistance for needy families or TANF benefits would greatly benefit low-income families in the district. In conclusion, Legal Aid supports the proposed legislation and urges the council to expand eligibility for the grandparent and caregiver subsidies further in order to ensure that all low-income district children receive support no matter what their family structure is. We also urge the council to expand eligibility for parents applying for TANF benefits as well as increased TANF benefit levels. Thank you very much for your time today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we're going to have Robin Swanson, Supervising Attorney, DC Volunteer Lawyers Project.
Good morning, Chairmember Lewis George and Kenny. My name is Robin Swanson, and I'm a supervising attorney at the DC Volunteer Lawyers Project. DCVLP is a nonprofit organization that was established in two thousand and eight to provide comprehensive pro bono legal assistance to domestic violence victims. We also represent at-risk children living with abuse, neglect, domestic violence, and other dangerous circumstances. For twelve years, we've served as court-appointed guardians ad litem, or GALs, for vulnerable children in complex custody cases. Our clients range in age, range in age, from newborn to seventeen years old. Most reside in wards five, seven, and eight and have experienced significant trauma resulting from growing up in homes with violence and neglect. Our court-appointed GALs conduct a thorough investigation of the child's life, including meeting with the child at home and at school, and interviewing the child's parents, family members, teachers, counselors, medical providers, and others involved in the child's life. The GALs also review educational, medical, mental health, criminal, and child welfare records. The GALs attend hearings to provide updates on their investigation and to advocate for the child's best interests. And at the conclusion of their investigation, our GALs advocate with the parties in the court for a permanent custody and visitation arrangement that is in the child's best interest. In two thousand and twenty-two, our attorneys and the volunteers we supervise represented one hundred and four at-risk children. Over ninety percent of those children either witnessed domestic violence, were physically or sexually abused themselves, or both. Many of the families in our cases, and this is why we're here today, have a history of CFSA involvement or involve a third-party caregiver. I'm here today on behalf of our client, our clients, to express our support for the proposed legislation before this committee. I'll start with B twenty-five dash four six four. This legislation is a welcome step forward in expanding the pool of third-party caregivers eligible for financial support. Many of our child clients have parents who are unable to safely care for them due to untreated mental health or substance abuse issues. Time and again, we have seen concerned third parties, usually a grandparent or other relative, step up to care for these children. Often, the third party's involvement comes at great personal and financial sacrifice. I'd like to highlight one of our recent cases as an example. We were appointed to represent the best interests of two school-aged children in a custody case between their parents. One of the parents had profound untreated mental health issues. The other had chronic housing instability and was not a reliable presence in the children's lives. The children both had special needs and were floundering. Fortunately, the children had a grandmother who was bound and determined to keep her grandchildren, quote-unquote, "out of the system." As she told the GALs and then the judge, she saw the path that they were on and knew it was not good. Despite living on a fixed income in a one-bedroom apartment with health issues of her own, the grandmother intervened in the custody case, and the children are now in her safe and stable care and on a more positive trajectory. There are selfless helpers like this grandmother throughout our city. We must ensure that third parties who are stepping up to care for the most vulnerable children in our community, particularly those who are already living on the edge of poverty, have the resources they need to succeed. DCVLP applauds any measure that increases support, financial or otherwise, to these caregivers. DCVLP also supports B twenty-five dash two four-three. We cannot overstate the importance of thorough, yet timely, CFSA investigations into credible allegations of abuse and neglect involving our clients. Our GALs routinely rely on CFSA investigative findings in their own investigations. If CFSA concludes that an abuse or neglect allegation substantiated or that a child is unsafe with a particular caregiver, that conclusion is critical to informing our GAL's custody recommendations. To highlight this point, I'd like to share a little bit about one of our cases. We were appointed to represent the best interests of a child in a custody case between the parents. Both parents alleged that the child was being mistreated by the other parent. Our volunteer GALs spent over a year investigating the case, but they were unable to conclusively determine that the child was being abused in either home. Based on the information they had at the time, they made a recommendation to the judge regarding permanent custody, and they were prepared to go to trial to support that recommendation. Just two weeks before the trial, CFSA received a complaint regarding an incident involving the child and opened their own investigation. The custody case proceedings effectively ground to a halt while the court and the GALs awaited news from CFSA. Trained CFSA social workers eventually concluded that the allegations of abuse were substantiated and that that child had suffered abuse while in the care of one of the parents. That finding led the GALs to alter the course of their own investigation and eventually changed their recommendation. DCVLP supports legislation aimed at providing realistic and achievable deadlines for CFSA to complete their important investigative work so that our GALs can use this valuable information to advocate on behalf of our clients. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony and all you do in your role for DCVLP. I want to next come to Mr. Eubanks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Chairperson Lewis George and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Jibril Eubanks, and I'm the political organizer for eleven ninety-nine SEIU. My name is Drew Bron Eubanks, and I'm the political organizer for 1199 SEIU, United Healthcare Workers East. 1199 represents 400,000 workers in the healthcare industry up and down the East Coast, and thousands of whom work in hospitals, clinics, and skilled nursing facilities within the District of Columbia. I'm here to testify on behalf of 1199 and its members to support B25-0464, the Grandparent Caregiver Subsidy Eligibility Act of 2023. In DC, according to the nonprofit DC King Care Alliance, almost 5,000 grandparents act as heads of households that their grandchildren live in. 25% of these individuals live in poverty, and 88% of them are black. A household income of $59,000 a year is 300% over the poverty line, but that amount is not nearly enough to support an entire family in DC. Even still, 11 GCP applications and 14 CRCP applicants were in 2022 denied subsidy payments based on income inelegibility. DC needs to provide these families with the resources necessary to support their households. An extra $500 a month is not a life-changing amount, but for struggling families, it will certainly help to cover costs for essential items, including toiletries, haircuts, and school supplies. It can also open a door for kids from low-income families to pursue recreational activities like school programs or dance lessons. So these funds are vital to assist some of our most vulnerable residents in DC, which are our children and our seniors. DC must expand eligibility requirements to include those 300,000 or 300% above the poverty line, because receiving these funds may, for some families, be a deciding factor on whether they are able to care for children or be forced to surrender them to the district's foster care system. Families should not have to decide between paying the rent and raising their niece or nephew who was suddenly dropped off at their doorstep. Additionally, children, if not for GCP or CRP benefits, who have been placed into foster care and given access to case managers, therapeutic services, and career educational support, should still have the opportunity to access those services even if they are not in a foster care home. My older sister and I were raised by my mother. Did not realize, not realized that we were, that we were to my grandmother. Of course, because she never should have did until I got older. My mother worked at a prison and drove one and a half hours to and from work every day. When she came home long after 6:00 PM, she would be so exhausted, probably from being spit on and harassed by inmates, that she would go into her room and she would nap for hours. It was my grandmother who would cook us dinner. It was my grandmother who took me to the bus stop in the morning and who would pick me up from basketball practice when my mother was too tired to drive. My grandmother was unemployed, and we all lived off a single income, off a single family income. She never complained about her responsibilities to us, but I know for sure that she could have used some financial assistance. Gas and groceries back then were a lot cheaper than they are today, so I can't imagine the weight on grandparents' shoulders to help not just their grandchildren, but in turn, their own children as well. 1199 SEIU supports the Grandparent Caregiver Subsidy Eligibility Amendment Act of 2023 and their goal of increasing the number of DC residents eligible to receive the funding. We commend Councilmember Lewis George and Councilmember Zachary Parker and the entire DC Council for their leadership, and we look forward to working with you all to get this passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eubanks. Thank you for sharing your story. And that means something, and I really appreciate that. And it had me thinking, my mother is a baby of seven and a grandchild of 13, and they grew up here in DC on 13th and T Street. And both of my mom's mom died when she was a young child, when they were young, and her dad as well, and my grandmother. And then my grandmother's, my great-grandmother's son died too. So she had to care for 13 grandkids on 13th and T Street. And she said, "I gotta, I'm gonna do whatever it takes, because I don't want them to go into the system." And at the time, we didn't have programs like this. But to just think that her care and her sacrifice of raising her 13, 13 grandkids, because both of her, her children passed away, allows for people like you and myself to be here today because of grandparents who stepped up to the plate to care for their, for their grandchildren and make a way. So really just wanted to thank you for imploring me to share that testimony and how important that is as well. I want to start going back, if I could, to Ms. McLennan. You mentioned in your testimony an alternative to the federal poverty level, the National Poverty Plan standards, as a more accurate sort of measure of poverty. Could you just talk a little bit more about that? How does the NPPS for DC compare to the federal poverty level?
Thank you so much for that question. The use of the median income is a better way to measure poverty because it measures and takes into account not only what it costs to live as an average in the entire country. It takes into account what the local costs are for things like housing and food and medical care. The way the federal poverty level is determined, if you live in the 48, lower 48 states, and it doesn't matter where, you're, the poverty level is calculated the exact same way. The only different calculation they use is for Alaska and Hawaii. And we all know that the cost of living across the country varies dramatically. When you're thinking about 300% of the federal poverty level for somebody living in the District of Columbia, that is very different than somebody making 300% of the federal poverty level living somewhere with a lower cost of living. Somebody who isn't aware of what the cost of living is in an urban area like DC might think that 300% of the federal poverty level is a decent living and is a middle-class living. And somewhere else in the country, that might be the case, but it's not the case here. And people who make 300% of federal poverty level, if you use that different standard using median income, those folks are still in poverty. They are still struggling. And in particular, when you're considering grandparent caregivers, there are folks who didn't have the opportunity to plan for these kids coming in their care, and they are usually on a fixed income. I would commend to the council the testimony of two relative caregivers today. One, who you're going to hear from herself, Kimberly Holmes, and one who unfortunately could not testify live today due to medical appointments, who submitted her written testimony, Johnny Rigsby. And you will see exactly how it impacts somebody when they are denied this benefit just because they are just over that 200% of FPL limit. One is a caregiver who literally fell off the benefits cliff when she got a job. And the other is a retired caregiver who, because her retirement benefit and Social Security just puts her over that 200%, doesn't get help for raising two kids in the district, and it makes things really difficult.
Thank you for that, and I will, and I will follow up and make sure I have conversation with Kimberly when she testifies and follow up with the other testimony. Haley Hoff, in your testimony in support of the Grandparent Caregiver Subsidy Eligibility Amendment Act, you recommended the council expand eligibility for different types of caregivers who are not currently covered by the program. Just wanted to see if you could further describe some of the caregiver situations that are not covered and what type of eligibility expansion could look like.
Yeah, so I'm happy to provide just an example. If you're looking at 300% of the federal poverty level in 2023 for a family of two per month, that would be $4,930. Right now, the TANF max income for that same family would be $588. So as Stephanie said, a parent that is receiving SSI would not be eligible for those crucial benefits. And I think that just demonstrates the huge disparity and demonstrates the need to expand eligibility for all caregivers.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for that. Robyn, thank you for your testimony in support of all three bills before us today. I want to ask you about the Investigation Completion Amendment Act. You described how much your organization, Guardians, Guardians at Lightem, rely on investigation findings from CFSA. Just wanted to see if you could talk more about how you believe the extended 45-day and 60-day deadlines in the bill would improve CFSA's findings and thus better inform the recommendations of your Guardians at Lightem. In other words, how will more, more time help?
Sure. I think, you know, finally completion is certainly helpful for us because oftentimes our investigations are, as I testified, effectively put on hold if there are new abuse allegations that are being investigated by CFSA. But more importantly for us is getting the right outcome there. You know, our Guardian lightens are almost all volunteer attorneys, and CFSA has trained social workers. They know how to go in and really investigate these incidents and come to the right conclusion in ways that our volunteers, you know, despite all of their best efforts, are not always able to do. So for our organization, just having confidence and faith that those investigations are being conducted thoroughly and are reaching the right outcome is just so important as we move forward with our own recommendations, that we can rely on those, on investigation findings with competence.
Great. Thank you for that. I'm going to turn to my colleague, Councilwoman Parker, to see if he has any questions for this panel.
Thank you, Chair Lewis George. I will just throw this out to anyone. From your data and your work, do you have data on how families are spending money that they are receiving for the care they're providing to grandchildren or extended relatives? Like, do you all collect that type of information? If so, what have been some of the trends you've identified? And anyone can answer that, but Ms. McClellan, maybe you want to speak to that, given your work with the King Care Alliance.
Good morning, Councilmember Parker. You weren't able to be present when I was testifying earlier, but I want you to know I did thank you for introducing this bill and for meeting with our relative caregivers this summer. It is something that made a really big difference in their lives to be heard by somebody who, who cares about what's going on with them. And I think it's resulted in excellent legislation. With regard to how our caregivers spend their money, that is not something we don't, we keep data on as a general matter. We don't collect their financial data. I will tell you anecdotally that many caregivers for whom we provide services legally to help them gain custody of their relative child, we also help them apply for benefits. And that does result necessarily in our assisting them by collecting, not necessarily over time, but certainly snapshots of financial data. We help them by providing their pay stubs in order to get benefits or proof of how much they pay for housing or proof of how much they receive in SSI. So I will say, just as a function of doing that, I have seen and had the opportunity to log in together with my clients to the cards they use to spend the benefits they get for the Grandparent Caregiver Subsidy and the benefits they receive from TANF and SNAP. And universally, what I see is that these benefits are being used in exactly the way that they were intended. They are being used to pay for food. They're being used to pay for clothing. They're being used to pay for school activities, being used to pay for tutoring even, being used to pay for furniture and bedding. These relative caregivers are not misusing the funds that they receive in any way that I have seen.
Thank you for that. And a quick follow-up there. We know per the responses from CFSA that there were seven individuals that were denied access to the subsidy program in fiscal year 23 because their income was above 200% of the poverty line but below 300%. Given the work that you do with the King Care Alliance, how many families do you know or can you point to that might be able to benefit if this subsidy was raised to 300% of the federal poverty line? Or I should ask, is there a specific number? And if you're talking, I can't hear you. I think you're muted.
Sorry about that. There's at least half a dozen that I can think of off the top of my head, and those would not be included. Those families would not be included in the data that CFSA provided because those are families where we have calculated their income is over 200% and told them to not bother applying because they don't qualify.
And so, yeah, per the responses from CFSA, that is a calculation that, you know, they are guesstimating. And I think they're suggesting there could be as high as 30-something thousand individuals that might be eligible. But to your point, we know at least seven individuals did apply and were not eligible, but that doesn't speak to the numbers of grandparents or extended family that didn't even bother to apply. Thank you. Ms. Swanson, I wanted to come to you in terms of lengthening the investigation timeline. What might be some legal pitfalls that the committee should be mindful of by allowing a longer investigation period, if any?
Well, I can speak to a specific example that happened in one of our cases about a year ago. We did have a parent who was aware that he was under investigation by CFSA. And he, while waiting for the outcome of that decision, basically refused to engage with our GALs, which was a concern, obviously. We really rely on the parties in our cases cooperating with our investigations to ensure that the child or the children we're representing are safe and that we can advocate for their best interests. So in that instance, you know, I think when, when parties are aware that there's an ongoing investigation that could turn out favorable or unfavorable to them, that can hold up our work. But again, I think, you know, our reliance on the ultimate findings and on that being, you know, investigation being completed in, in, in the most, you know, effective way possible, that sort of outweighs, for us, the, the potential downfalls of, of these delays that can result. We really value the work that CFSA does.
Thank you. Yeah, as do I, and I believe the agency is doing great work. And so that, that is my time, but I want to, again, thank you all for your testimony today.
Thank you, Councilwoman Parker, and thank you to our entire panel. I'll now invite up our second panel of public witnesses, Melody Webb, Executive Director and founders of Mothers Outreach Network, Maria Jackson, Mothers Outreach Network, Tanika McKeachin, Mothers Outreach Network, and Yasmin Holmes, Mothers Outreach Network. Again, if I mess up your name, it's okay to correct me, and I apologize in advance.
Good morning, Chairperson Lewis George and Member Parker. My name is Melody Webb, and I'm Executive Director of Mothers Outreach Network, a nonprofit advocacy and legal services organization. I'm also a resident and native of DC. Our legal representation includes early defense advocacy, also known as prepetition, at the investigation stage of a case by CPS. Our work seeks to empower DC mothers to transform government laws, policies, and practices impacting Black families from punitive to supportive. The city has a 16% poverty level, and the majority of cases and parents involved with CFSA are deeply impacted by poverty. Through the DC Guaranteed Income Coalition, we seek to pass a program of permanent, regular, and unconditional cash payments, including no work requirements for residents and workers living below the poverty line as a means, in part, to address involvement with CFSA. Our mother-of-cash transfer pilot seeks to model providing cash to parents at risk of or currently involved with CFSA. We believe addressing poverty, such as through the expansion of eligibility for current benefits, is beneficial, as is passing additional child tax credit, which we thank Councilmember Parker for introducing. This will mitigate poverty and the need for child welfare involvement and caregiver involvement. Our concerns with the proposed legislation are rooted in our framework of values and advancing Black family preservation. I'm testifying today on two bills before the I'm testifying today on two bills before the council, the Investigation Completion Act and the Grandparent Caregiver Subsidy Eligibility Act. In August of 2022, the American Bar Association adopted Resolution 606, which calls on all legal professionals to recognize how over-surveillance of and under-investment in Black families has shaped the child welfare field for centuries and should be examined and addressed. We are a nation of intrusive family policing, particularly as it concerns Black families with 53% of Black children and 28% of white experiencing an investigation by a child welfare agency by their 18th birthday. We oppose the Investigation Completion Act. When the council last year passed important changes to the Child Protection Register rules through the Educator Background Check Streamlining Amendment Act, it made a step forward for the financial well-being of children and their families, liberating them from a fate of insurmountable employment barriers. But today, you risk a move backwards. We urge the council to shorten, not lengthen, the timeline for CFA's completion investigations. This will intensify the due process issues that make it urgent for the council to support the establishment of a right to counsel and ensure the parent gets notice of a right to legal counsel upon first contact with the agency. Longer investigation periods set the stage for even more, even more for removals due to hidden foster care, a coercive placement with a relative or caregiver that does not get court oversight. And our current system, as Professor Gupta Kagan says, it's as if a police department investigated a crime, concluded an individual is guilty, did not file charges or provide him with an attorney and told him he had to agree to go to jail for several weeks or months or else would bring him to court and things get even worse. CPS investigations, you'll hear from my colleagues, is a traumatic process for the entire family. The ABA resolution condemning harms of the system included in its report that today, family integrity is a well-established fundamental liberty interest under the 14th Amendment. It protects the interests of parents in directing the upbringing of their children and maintaining their families free from unwarranted government intrusion. The expansion of the timeline is unwarranted government intrusion. And my comments on the caregiver subsidy bill are these. Like you, Councilmember George, my maternal grandmother raised my cousins when their mother passed. We understand the importance of supporting the person who stands in for the parent when necessary. And for this reason, we support the bill, but we also support increasing supports from natural parents. But here are two notes of caution. Our concern is that this caregiver subsidy bill incentivizes the agency to increase the incidence of hidden foster care and more caregivers will be eligible and more hidden removals are likely to occur. Hidden foster care occurs when the agency threads to remove children and take parents to court, a process that could lead to an indefinite placement of children in foster care and even termination of parental rights. And then there's the issue of inequity. The poverty that impacts the relative caregivers begins in the homes of the parents. Some 30% of single moms in DC live in poverty, most Black and Brown, and at risk of involvement with CFSA. And in terms of equity, one child with a parent on aid in DC receives $471. And in contrast, a person fostering the child receives $1,000. Finally, as we advocate for the subsidy program, I urge you to understand the impact this could have on the SNAP benefits of participants that may be lost to caregivers as a result of this increase in their income. If the law is passed, you face a risk that the mayor through DHS may not implement the law to protect the benefits. That is what has happened in the Earned Income Tax Clarification Amendment Act, which was passed to protect the benefits of pilot participants in programs like ours. So we urge you to, in fact, adopt a broad waiver requirement that requires the agency to protect the benefits of participants in all programs, including those like these. The ABA resolution condemning the harms of the system included in its report, the expansion of this timeline, we believe, is unwarranted and that it impedes parents' rights in harmful and traumatic ways. We urge you to oppose the Investigation Completion Act. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up, we have Maria Jackson, Mothers Outreach Network. Good morning. Or good afternoon now.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Jackson. I'm testifying on Mothers Outreach. I'm born and raised in DC. I've dealt with CPS and CFSA. First, I would like to speak up about CFSA investigations. I do not support the bill because CPS has enough time to do investigations. To, to, to stand, to, which might sound short. To, to, I apologize, but to parents that. Practice this, but to parents, there is a lot more time where you're involved in CPS or CPS or CFSA case. It stresses me out during the investigation. CPS, the CFSA is around her. They have you round and round. You need. And they take, they take you through the investigation. I do apologize. I didn't have the money to keep going around this place. I would like to know if CPS was supposed to provide me with the money to help me get my child to this place. But I spent my own money to get this child, this child to home. Every appointment they asked me to go to, it stressed me out. And it stressed me out. I'm also in a wheelchair. It affected my health. My hair fall out. And it was, it just was, it wasn't right for the other kids. Because it put more attention to him. It brought more attention to him. And I don't think that's fair when you are thinking about, you are thinking about rather to extend this investigation. I would like for you to think about families and when and what you're going to take them to. Next, I would like to speak about the grandparents bill. I think it's good for the grandparents to get, to get the child, but at the same time. But at the same time, about the parents, what about the parents? My parents, who had been in the system, and it's parents, CFSA. But where's the whole family? There's the whole family. There's my whole family. Sometimes there is nobody willing to take the child, so that child ended up in a group home, which is bad. The parents had been, if the parents was giving money, maybe the child was better off. Better off being helped by CFSA or CPS. Well, why would the child be taken from a home if that child was not in danger? Or if you didn't listen to the child and not the parent? I don't feel as though it was resolved because that the family could have had a family therapy and given money at the same time to help out the solution. And thank you for listening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity because my family went through a lot. With one child, thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Any questions, please, I would be delighted to answer.
Thank you. We will, I'm gonna get to two more witnesses and then we'll have some questions. Next up, we have Tanika McKeachin.
Good afternoon. Hello, my name is Tanika McKeachin. I'm testifying at Reach Network. I have been a resident of Washington DC for 32 years and I have three children. First, I would like to speak on the Child and Family Services Agency Investigation Completion Amendment Act, which will extend the time given to CFSA to conduct their investigations. I don't have too much experience with CFSA myself, but I do know people who does. As soon as CFSA get involved, they start with pointing the finger at the parent. If they see that you have a support system, they might try and help you. But if they see that you're on your own and you don't know too much, then they'll take advantage of that. When a parent is under investigation, it can send them into depression because it gets hard. It can take a toll on your mental health for that reason. I think investigations should only happen to the benefit of the parent. For example, if a parent needs extra time to provide information that will help them in their case, other than that, I don't think investigations should last longer if it will help CFSA. They had enough time already. Next, I would like to speak about the Grandparent and Caregiver Subsidy Eligibility Amendment Act. First, I think it's good to extend these subsidies so more relatives can get them. It's a lot of responsibility to take on a child. I know someone who is in a kinship caregiver and she's older, so she can't get out there and work. She gets a stipend, and I think that she should. Often, grandparents and relative caregivers aren't able to work because of their age. So expanding the eligibility would be good. That said, the goal should be to keep the kids with their parents so the relatives don't need to take care of the kids in the first place. If a parent can't afford the basic needs for the child, like clothing, for example, they should get assistance to go to a clothing store. The idea is always for the parents to keep their children. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we have Yasmin Holmes.
Good afternoon. My name is Jasmine A. Holmes, and I live here in local Washington DC. I am a single mom of three children, and I was born in DC and grew up in the foster care system. I am currently a participant in the Mothers of Guaranteed Income Program. First, I would like to speak about the CFSA Investigation Completion Amendment Act. I do not think that CFSA should have more time to investigate parents. I have experience with CFSA and know people that have experienced. When CFSA investigates you, it's torture. They try to find anything they can and call people they have no business calling. I know someone with a case where they called the kid's father and told them that the mother was pregnant by somebody else. So then she had to answer questions from him. She wasn't prepared to answer. I know someone with a case where the investigator took pictures of their son naked. When you're under investigation, you have to answer the phone every time they call, no matter what you're doing. It is so distressing that in some cases, people need therapy. For me, I was a first-time mom. I was just trying to do everything right, and then I had this person on my back making everything so stressful. I don't think anyone should have to go through that. The investigation process is already so stressful, and I don't think CFSA should have more time to investigate people. Now, I would like to speak about the Grandparents and Caregivers Subsidy Eligible Amendment Act. I feel like it's not relatives who need financial help, but also parents of children. Not every parent can work. When my kids was younger, I used to work at a grocery store, but with jobs like that, you don't get a schedule. Some days you work early, some days you stay late. And the daycare facility complained that I wasn't picking my kids up on time, so I had to stop. The job took a toll on my baddie in my mind, and I could not do it anymore. I left that job and now care for my kids full-time. When CFSA first came to me, I had no idea how the process worked. I thought they could see how much money I made and that they could just come in and take my kids because I had no other income. If CFSA wants to help families, they will provide financial resources to those who need it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, we're gonna start with a round of questions. Ms. Webb, I want to come to you. In your testimony, you mentioned that longer investigations lead to more kids being removed from families. Can you elaborate about that? Why is that and what data indicates that?
So what I'm saying is that it's likely to do so because what happens is that there's, you know, there's a big problem with hidden foster care. The investigation period allows the agency to identify more potential relative caregivers or placements and therefore gives them time to devise ways to use, you know, safety planning or other measures which can be coercive to place those children with those caregivers. You know, we have observed and there's been testimony in prior hearings about the prevalence of hidden foster care. So our assertion and belief is that a longer investigation period will exacerbate that problem.
Got it. Okay. And I want to come to, before they have to leave, Tanika, and I think Yasmin also, but you spoke about the negative mental impact that being under investigation has on parents. I know, and Yasmin described it as sort of a torture and very stressful. What's your advice for CFSA to improve the way they conduct these investigations so they aren't so difficult? They have to happen. So what would improve the process or what would have improved the process for you all in your circumstances?
My advice. My advice would be to be a little more understanding and not point the finger because you don't know what people are going through. So when you come in and you're pointing the finger at that parent, it becomes a little discouraging and it makes them feel like you're against them. So my advice would to be a little, be a little more understanding.
Yeah.
For me, I would be, I would say more understanding because, you know, people go through, like at the time of the investigation, I was going through a transition housing and a domestic dispute with my child's father. And then I had CPS call to me. It was a lie. And, you know, it took a toll on my mental and just a lot of thoughts was going through my head. My caseworker, she wasn't making it better. She was like telling me if I was found guilty, then I couldn't go on filters with my son. I was a first-time mom. So, you know, I was really distressed out and I didn't know, like I didn't have anybody to help me. So just feel like a little bit more understanding and like we are single mothers and we young, you know, and we just learn as we go.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate both of you sharing, sharing that. And we'll try to get some ways in which we can support more, more parents who are under investigation, whether it's like mental health support, therapy support, you know, anything that can make the process a little bit easier for you all. I'm gonna now turn to my colleague, Councilwoman Parker, for questions he may have.
Thank you. Ms. Webb, it was great to have you join today's hearing. I'm a big fan of the work that you lead and your continued advocacy. I noted your, the statistics that you provided, which were roughly 53% in comparison to roughly 20 or so percent of Black families to white families are under investigation. And so I'm just gonna push here a little bit because some of the statistics that CFSA provided in their pre-hearing responses suggests that in fiscal year 23, the agency invests, investigates approximately 750 families within a 30-day window versus 200 or 2,000 rather and 300 families. And so to your point, there is a potential for more families to be investigated. Many of those families likely to be Black families. But couldn't it be seen that those investigations are ensuring that more young people are not in harm's way? So my question is, that was more of a rhetorical question. In lieu of lengthening the investigation period that would allow the agency to conduct more investigations to ensure young people are not in harm's way, what would, how would you suggest CFSA address the workload that is before them if it is not to lengthen their investigation period?
Well, I would suggest that they would narrow the categories of abuse and neglect. So for example, as my colleague Ms. Holmes mentioned, when a woman is experiencing domestic violence or a parent is experiencing domestic violence, that should not be a basis for removal, a failure to protect in that circumstance, a failure to file a civil protection order in that circumstance is a basis for removal. So there's some, many of these investigations wouldn't happen if we narrow the basis for an investigation to begin with. There are, you know, others that we would say should not be deemed neglect as well. So that would be one way, and we have some proposals that we have offered to council members in the past and would be glad to share those. So narrowing the entry point and the basis for investigation would be one way to reduce the investigation workload.
And we don't have those numbers in front of us, but that is something I will certainly follow up with CFSA to see if they can. And we don't have those numbers in front of us, but that is something I will certainly follow up with C F S A to see if they can break down their data based on referrals linked to certain indicators, uh, like the one you provided. Uh, you also highlighted hidden removals, and just to make sure I'm understanding your suggestion, uh, there, you're talking about once a family is under investigation and a child is removed from the parents, and let's say they are in the care of a loved one and extended family member, a grandparent, for instance, that is what you're deeming hidden removal, or are you talking about something else?
That is hidden removal. I mean, there's a, a very elaborate definition of it, but it's essentially when under coercion, and it usually starts, you know, this process starts with an investigation. The parent is coerced into an agreement to place the child with a relative caregiver. Um, and, you know, it's known as hidden foster care. I commend you to an article written by scholar Josh Gupta Kagan, who actually used to practice law here in Washington DC. Um, you know, and it's a practice that is rampant, that the agency, um, has acknowledged and developed some policies recently about. My colleagues here on the panel, on the prior panel, could talk with you about this as well. Um, so, you know, in those circumstances, the parent does not have a right to an attorney. There are actually now a couple of jurisdictions where there is a right to counsel during this investigation period. And we are, in fact, um, in conversation, uh, with members of the council about a right to counsel. We think it's the way to address, one way to address the abuses that occur during, um, investigation. You give that parent, um, the opportunity, um, an indigent parent or anyone who can't afford counsel, the opportunity to consult with an attorney. And in fact, sometimes that might, uh, result in a consensual, uh, decision to place a child with a relative, but it's in a manner that would preserve that parent's right to reunify with their child. Um, we don't want children in the foster system, but when they are in that system, the agency is required to pursue reunification, and their work, their efforts with the parent are under the, the, a judge's supervision, the court supervision, and under hidden foster care, there is no court supervision. And, um, you know, abuses occur, children and parents, we don't know if their issues, you know, are being resolved. We don't know if their well-being is being addressed. So that is not a solution, uh, to address the well-being of children and parents.
No, thank you. Um, I will take you up on that offer to follow up. I will say, I recall oversight hearings and the director speaking in very similar themes, saying, "We don't want more, especially black children ending up in the system. We want to make sure we can keep children with their families." And so, uh, I will certainly follow up with the director about that. I am, um, I will just say, and not that I'm challenging what you're suggesting, on the flip side, I'm just really concerned that if we don't take heed to certain warnings or potential harms by way of investigation, we therefore leave more young people in harm's way and/or with abusive families and/or in situations that may spiral out of control. Uh, so again, I will follow up on that, but thank you for the recommendations. Uh, and I, I am persuaded by the push for right to counsel for those parents that find themselves uh, under investigation as a means of just leveling the playing field. Uh, you also highlighted, Ms. Webb, uh, general support for, uh, increasing access to the caregiver subsidy program, uh, but warned, uh, potential fiscal cliffs. That is something I know I've talked with you about. We have engaged with C F S A, uh, as well as, uh, DHS and others, and, and that is top of mind for us. Uh, there is some information that we will follow up with the director about on that, uh, but just wanted to acknowledge that as well. To, uh, Ms., uh, Holmes and other parents that testified, thank you for uh, just sharing about your experiences, uh, as well as your support for increasing the eligibility for the caregiver subsidy program. That is my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parker. Um, I am going to call our next set of witnesses. Uh, Kathleen Welch, public witness, Deborah Johnson, public witness, Linda Donaldson, public witness, Kelly Jenkins, public witness, Kimberly Holmes, uh, public witness, and Gwen Umbach, Umbach? I hope I don't get this wrong. Umbach, public witness. There are several attendees without names or with names that are not on the witness list. If your name was just called or you would like to testify, please raise your hand, and my staff will promote you to this panel. I see, I see a Samsung. Who, who is the Samsung?
My apologies, Councilwoman. Um, this is Kimberly.
Okay, that's okay. Um, good afternoon, Kimberly. Uh, you, you can, um, begin your testimony.
Uh, thank you. Good morning. My name is Kimberly Holmes. I live in Ward Eight, where the average income is the lowest in the city. In October two thousand eighteen, I experienced a major life-changing event. My sister was hospitalized at CPAT because of her severe mental health disorder. I took my niece in, and C F S A told me I had to file for emergency custody for her to prevent her from going to foster care. C F S A never told me that my niece, if I took her in for foster care, I would be able to be a foster parent, and they will assist me in providing to raise for her. I had difficulties registering my, my niece for school, buying her clothes, toys, the necessary needs that she in order to thrive. I had no birth certificate, no social security card, no medical card. I had to take several days off of work, get legal papers, and also go through custody hearings, which ended up me losing my job. After six months, I finally received tannif and food stamps. On April twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, I testified to support the the expansion of the grandparent caregiver program to include other relative caregivers like me. Council passed the Close Caregiver, Caregiver Subsidy Pilot Program Act two thousand nineteen. On November the twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, it went into effect. Eventually received employment. I eventually got employed with one of our local nonprofits here in the district. And that was a good thing for me. I'm actually grateful to still be employed. However, I failed off the benefit. I'm still, I still receive tannif, however, it doesn't cover food costs. I don't receive food stamps as well. I lost the Close Caregiver Program, and DC Kincare has been assisting me with financial, um, and letting me know that because of it, I fall over the federal eligibility two hundred percent, um, poverty level. And that does not ensure me, and I would not be insured eligibility for the program. I support the bill co-funded by Chairperson Lewis George and Chairperson Parker to expand the federal eligibility for grandparents caregiver and close relative program for two, from two thousand, from two hundred percent, my apologies, to three hundred percent of the federal poverty level. I'm asking that council pass the Grandparent Caregiver Subsidy Eligibility Amendment Act of two, two thousand twenty-three to help my niece and other children like her. I thank you for this opportunity to speak on this matter. I believe that legislation will make a better for our children in the future.
Thank you for your testimony. I want to do a check to see if we have any of our other witnesses. Um, Kimberly, I just want to say thank you for sharing your, your story today. Um, in, in your testimony, uh, you said, "I feel like my niece is paying the price for me doing what I was supposed to do, getting a job." Um, and I think unfortunately, under the current system, that is too true for you and so many others. And I just want to, you to know that I hear you, I see you. Um, and we're gonna do everything we can to prevent a step forward, like getting a job, turning into a step backward by losing a critically needed and deserved resource. Um, if, if I asked any question, I guess it would be, if, can you talk about what the tangible difference the program subsidy payments will make? Um, for a, a family who is in between that two hundred percent and three hundred percent of the federally defined poverty level? Um, what, what, what's the difference it would make to have that additional, um, to have that additional funding?
Great question, Council. Um, from my experience in knowing other parents, first, I want to just, you know, go on record, I'm not a parent, and I give my heart out to parents who have to raise children. And in this, um, opportunity that God allowed me to raise my niece, financially, um, it is hard, especially since the economy has raised and eligibility just to live in, the requirements to live in a two-bedroom, um, three times my income, I don't meet. And so having that extra income for my niece allows me to pay for aftercare and beforecare. Um, it allows her to participate in other activities, um, if within. Um, it also tremendously helped me in food because, um, the eligibility I don't make, uh, I don't meet because they use my income. Um, it mostly goes to her food, um, and clothes. The kids grow, you know, um. So having this extra income for anyone, it actually will benefit because the cost of living, you know, has gone up. And in my ward, it's, we don't, our average income is not like Ward One or Two. It, and, and the prices is just, we can't control it economically. But if we are able to get some extra assistance, we're just focused on the kids' needs, you know, it will allow me as the caregiver to focus on the, the actual housing, you know, that I still have a difficulty because you have to make three times what the rent is. And if you don't have that, then it's like, okay, what to do?
Yeah. Understood. Um, just checking to see if we have any other witnesses who joined, and I'm turning it to Councilmember Parker to see if he has any questions.
Ms. Holmes, thank you for that very powerful testimony. You are, in fact, the types of people we had in mind when we crafted this legislation, knowing that there are so many loved ones, both grandparents and other relatives that are stepping up to the plate to take care of uh, their love, their children and their family members to ensure they don't end up in the system. Um, and as you put it, uh, you should be, uh, not necessarily rewarded for that, but compensated. Uh, because as you noted, um, it takes money to take care of a child, both in terms of addressing their health needs, but also their educational, uh, growth and development. Uh, I don't have many other questions outside of those that, uh, Chairperson Lewis George, uh, asked, but I would encourage you to elaborate, if you could briefly, on just what might the difference mean if you were able to receive the, the, uh, subsidy, uh, through this caregiver program? What are some of the things you might spend the money on? And I'm asking that uh, because I know there is a constant refrain, uh, from those that may look at the council attempting to raise, uh, benefits to say, well, individuals will receive this money and misuse it, or this money will not necessarily directly go to, to the benefit of a child. So if you could just briefly elaborate, how might you use the extra money that would come through this subsidy program if you were included?
Great question, Council. So I can use an actual example. So, um, thankful to DC and the new, um, way the OSI in the schools allow children to have opportunities to be at different, um, schools that provide awesome education and other services. Um, do DC lottery. So my niece was able to get elected to be one of those schools. However, because the school thrives and has, um, certain services, certain other services are not provided or free, such as before and aftercare. And because of my work schedule, I literally need before and aftercare. And that wasn't qualifying me for OSI and the, the, um, voucher, because again, that also has an income bracket. Um, so with that money, it allows me, so let's just say, I'm throwing it out there, the aftercare for a month is three hundred and fifty dollars. Let's just say allegedly that's like, um, you get an average, my tannif is less than five hundred. Where do you think that money's gonna go? It's gonna go to before and aftercare in order to keep my job. At the same time, my, um, children have their own, um, perspective of eating, so so they like extra stuff, and food costs, a gallon of milk is now almost five dollars. A box of cereals is almost five dollars. Um, bread is now three dollars. A carton of egg is running you with three, four, and four dollars. That's a hundred dollars at the grocery store. And maybe, um, they can consider, I guess, part of it. You look at other, um, eligibility requirements when it comes to food stamps, maybe that can even, I don't know, but what I'm just, from my personal experience, that money for me would definitely be for aftercare and beforecare and, um, other essential needs like food and clothes.
That's a powerful testimony. A few things I would quickly highlight, and I would know, I'm not sure where you're shopping, where eggs are three and four dollars, so maybe offline you could tell me, but that's certainly not what I'm seeing when I go to the grocery store. But your point is the point is well-taken, Dad. The cost of food and everything else is going up, and we know that people's paychecks are not, uh, keeping pace. Uh, one thing I believe, and I don't have my team here with me in the moment, that in our last budget, we did increase the eligibility threshold for the OSI Child Care voucher program. So I would encourage you to go back and check. I believe that was increased to three hundred percent of the federal poverty line, and so you may be eligible for that. Uh, but also, I would encourage you to stay tuned with the committee as we go through this process. Um, and again, just want to thank you for a very rich and powerful testimony.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Parker, and I reiterate, thank you so much for your, for your, for your testimony. Um, one last check on witnesses. All right. Okay, we're gonna take a three-minute break just to get our government witnesses an opportunity to set up uh, and be prepared to, uh, give, give testimony. All right. Good afternoon. Uh, first, thank you to all of our public witnesses who testified today. Um, we will now hear from our government witnesses. I want to acknowledge our government witnesses. We're here, listening, listening the entire time and intently to all of our public witnesses. And I always appreciate when government is just really in tune and listening to the community. And so for the community members who could not see them here, I wanted you to know that they were here the entire time, listening intently to all of the testimony presented. Um, we have here with us today, uh, Tanya Torres-Trice. Did I say that right? Trice. Trice. I, I literally got it right and then got it wrong. Look at me. She is the Chief of Staff of the Child and Family Services Agency. Uh, we have Elizabeth Mafalato, C F S A- Uh, we have Elizabeth Mofaletto, CFSA's Deputy Director of Hotline Investigations. And Sharif Dean Ibrahim, the Administrator in CFSA's Office of Thriving Families. Thank you for all for being here. I, um, also want to acknowledge and thank CFSA Director Robert Matthews for being with us today as well. Um, and for his work leading, uh, CFSA. Um, before you begin your testimony, I'm gonna administer an oath to you. Please raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you are about to give to the Committee on Facilities and Family Services? Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Great. We will start with Ms. Uh, Tanya Torres-Trice, Chief of Staff of CFSA, who will be testifying on the Losing. Outdated Violent Exceptions Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, thank you, Ms. Torres, for being here. We will now, and then we will begin with you.
All right. Good morning, Chairwoman Lewis George, members of the Committee on Facilities and Family Services and committee staff. My name is Tanya Torres-Trice, and I serve as the Chief of Staff of the DC Child and Family Services Agency. I'm a Ward Five resident and a proud licensed social worker for nearly twenty years. I appreciate the opportunity to testify in support of Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four three. The Losing Outdated Violent Exceptions Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-three, otherwise known as the Love Amendment Act. If enacted, the Love Act will repeal the religious exemption to the district's neglect law. Found in DC Code four dash one, three, two, one, point oh six, where a child is not considered neglected. For the purpose of mandatory reporting if a parent chooses treatment solely by spiritual means. Through prayer in accordance with religious practices and beliefs. CFSA supports the Love Act because it aligns with the mandatory reporting of medical neglect for all children. In cases of medical neglect, the agency will follow its investigation protocol for abuse and neglect allegations. Which considers a parent's religious beliefs and the reasons for refusing medical treatment for their child. If the denial of medical care is life-threatening or will result in severe harm to a child, court intervention may be necessary. In these cases, cases, a parent's due process rights will be protected as the court will weigh the benefits of the proposed treatment. Along with a parent's reason for refusing treatment before ordering medical care or appointing, appointing a medical guardian. As CFSA moves from well, a child welfare system to a well-being agency, our top priority is keeping DC families together when it's safe to do so. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Torres-Trice. We will now hear from Elizabeth Mofaletto, our Deputy Director of Hotline Investigations. Who will be testifying on the Child and Family Services Agency Investigation Completion Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-three.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Lewis George, members of the Committee on Facilities and Family Services and committee staff. My name is Elizabeth A. Mofaletto, and I serve as Deputy Director of Hotline and Investigations. At the DC Child and Family Services Agency. I appreciate the opportunity to testify in support of Bill twenty-five dash zero two four three. The Child and Family Services Agency Investigation Complete, Completion Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-three. The bill will extend the timeframes for completing a child protective abuse and neglect investigation. From thirty days to forty-five days and allows sixty days to complete a more complex. Investigations involving child fatalities, sex trafficking, or a report of abuse or neglect in an institutional setting. In addition to the investigation completion timeframe, timeframe provisions. We are also planning to propose additional language to the bill to align the law with our practice. That sunsets the family assessment differential response, differential response approach in two thousand and nineteen. This practice approach allowed for an alternative response to accepted hotline reports on alleged child abuse and neglect referrals. Rather than certain reports automatically be referred for an investigation. Those reports would be referred for a family assessment to provide services for family stabilization. The assigned social worker had five days to initiate the family assessment. Our data has shown that our families and the district are better served by conducting a thorough CPS investigation. Rather than a family assessment. Furthermore, CFSA has not conducted family assessments in four years, and we have no intention of returning to that practice. CFSA is responsible for the investigation of allegations of abuse and neglect of children residing in the District of Columbia. The agency's Child Protective Services Administration accepts referrals through the hotline at two zero two six seven one safe. And CPS staff determine whether referrals rise to the level of abuse or neglect requiring the need for a child welfare response. If so, CPS will also determine whether the referral requires an investigation within what timeframe, immediately or within twenty-four hours. Timely initiation of investigations is required for determining child safety. The two-hour response time is assigned when a report of suspected abuse or neglect indicates that the child's health. Or safety is an imminent danger. I.e. there is present danger to the child that qualifies an emergency and that requires an immediate response. This response must occur within two hours of the hotline receiving the report. The twenty-four hour response time is assigned to a report where there is no immediate danger or imminent risk of abuse or neglect. A full investigation must be completed no more than thirty days after the hotline report is accepted and assigned to an investigator. The Child in Need of Protection Amendment Act of two thousand and four. Codified the Lashawn requirements that investigations of alleged child abuse or neglect be completed within thirty days. In two thousand and ten, the Lashawn Implementation and Exit Plan reinforced that abuse and neglect investigations must be completed within the thirty days. However, it also allowed CFSA to complete an investigation involving a report of abuse or neglect at a group home. Daycare setting or other congregate care setting within sixty days. In two thousand and twenty-one, the court monitor allowed investigations with approved extensions to be considered timely. The proposed amendments for Bill twenty-five dash zero two four three. Will provide CFSA with additional time to complete abuse and neglect investigations. This is an in line, excuse me, is in alignment with practices nationwide. As most states requiring investigations to be completed, completed within a certain timeframe allow for more than thirty days for completion. Of the thirty-one states that require CPS investigations to be completed within a specified timeframe, only four states. Require investigations to be completed within thirty days or less. Eleven of the states require investigations to be completed within forty-five. Or sixty dot, or sixty days allow for extensions ranging from fifteen to thirty days. This bill also allows for sixty days to complete more complex investigations involving fatalities. Sex trafficking and reports of abuse or neglect in institutional settings. Which require even longer-term engagement and service provisions. The current thirty-day timeframe does not consider the complexities involved in investigations that often require coordination. With other entities such as law enforcement and medical professionals. Extending the timeframe will improve the overall quality of investigations by ensuring that CFSA has the time to collect the necessary information. Over the course of the, excuse me, Lashawn lawsuit. Changes were made to the investigation process to ensure that investigations are of acceptable quality. Social workers are required to obtain more information, but the timeframe for gathering that information engaging children. Parents and collaterals has not changed to align with the added requirements. Before exiting Lashawn, CFSA engaged in discussions with the plaintiffs. Um, and the independent verification, verification agent. To review our data regarding the number of investigations completed in thirty days and forty-five days to assist with informing this shift. And they were in support of our interest in amending the law in this area. These changes will not impact child safety. CFSA will still be required to complete the initial phase of the investigation and assess the safety and risk. To the child and other children in the household within twenty-four hours. Finally, removing the family assessment provisions will align the law with our current practice. We intend to propose language for inclusion into this bill before the first markup. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and for your continuing concern for the safety and well-being of the children in the District of Columbia. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Ibrahim.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Lewis George, members of the Committee on Facilities and Family Services and committee staff. My name is Sheriff Dean Ibrahim, and I serve as the Administrator in the Office of Thriving Families of the DC Child and Family Service Agency, also known as CFSA. I appreciate the opportunity to testify regarding Bill twenty-five dash zero four six four. The Grandparent and Caregiver Subsidy Eligibility Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-three. The bill will expand eligibility of grandparent caregiver programs, also known as GCP. And the Close Relative Caregiver Program, also known as CRCP. The Grandparent Caregiver and Close Relative Caregiver Programs support low-income district caregivers. Who are willingly taking on the responsibility of caring for their young relatives. Children in their care, in the care of their relatives are more likely to maintain connections with siblings. Preserve their cultural heritage and maintain community bonds. The GCP and CRCP programs help ensure that children can remain with family by providing financial assistance. To families who may lack financial resources to care for, for the child. Currently, the income of a grandparent or close relative must be under two hundred percent of the federal poverty level. The proposed bill will expand suitability for the programs. By raising eligibility to include households between two hundred percent and three hundred percent of the federal poverty level. Expanding eligibility for these critical financial supports will enhance economic stability for the district residents. So they can access the needed resources and support, supportive services for children to thrive. As a child, as a child welfare agency, we see firsthand how low-income households and families are at greater risk of systems involvement. When experiencing economic stress and material hardship. Programs such as the GCP and CRCP all allow children to stay with family. And keep, keep them out of foster care. Providing low-income families with additional financial resources will have lasting impacts on child and family well-being. And reduce child welfare agency involvement. Fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, five hundred and two GCP caregivers received subsidies supporting seven hundred and eighty children. During the same period, sixty-two CRCP providers received a subsidy supporting ninety-seven children. Raising the eligibility threshold from two hundred to three hundred percent of the federal poverty level. Will result in more families being eligible for the program. However, the programs are subject to appropriations and CFSA may need additional resources to support the increased number of families that will qualify for the program. CFSA has deepened its investment in primary and upstream prevention efforts in the district. Which has contributed to a decrease in the number of children in foster care by seventy-five percent since fiscal year two thousand and ten. As of September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, there were four hundred and ninety-six children in care. Initiatives such as the CFSA kinship program afford the agency the much-needed flexibility. To continue stabilizing children and families in their communities. CFSA also established and launched a web-based portal, the Kinship Navigator, in fiscal year twenty-three. To support the GCP and CRCP applicant eligibility process. To make it easier for caregivers to apply for the program. CFSA has seen an increase in applicants since the launch of the portal. CFSA's Office of Thriving Families is implementing a new model, a new model to engage and support all current and future applicants. As our GCP and CRCP caregivers need and require more than the subsidy. CFSA will be supporting caregivers by holding bi-weekly informational workshops. Monthly orientations and monthly support groups to help share resources with grandparents and close relative caregivers. And organizing guest speakers that can educate the community on the benefits of, on the benefits of both programs. Within our kinship program, we are working to help foster and create a community of belonging and support. By holding outreach events on an ongoing basis so grandparents and close relative caregivers do not feel isolated and or left on their own to figure things out. In addition, regularly scheduled community-based enrichment activities take place. For support, awareness, recreation, and entertainment for children and families. Our special and holiday season program, program will remain a staple. Uh, for example, our computer giveaways, uh, backpack supplies to families. Uh, IT workshops, Mothers' and Fathers' Day bullfries, Thanksgiving meal distributions, and end-of-the-year holiday celebrations. In conclusion, the proposed bill will provide valuable financial resources to grandparents and close relative caregivers. Under the expansion, CFSA cannot guarantee funding for every applicant. Who might be approved with a program subsidy if funding remains level. Families are put on a waitlist, CFSA remains committed to meeting the needs of these clients with the resources we have available while looking ahead. For future program preservation strategies. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and for your continued support of the well-being of children and families in the District of Columbia. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, thank you so much, each of you, for your, uh, detailed, uh, testimony. Um, Ms. Torres-Christ, I'm gonna start with you. Um, I want to ask you, uh, under the current system, what happens when CFSA deems a child is not abused? Or neglected due to the religious exception? Is the case just closed, or is, and there is there any follow-up to monitor the well-being of the child? Um, who, if not for the religion of the parents, may have been deemed. Abused or neglected?
So under, uh, the current status, a parent can refuse medical treatment based on religious grounds. Um, and not fear, fear of being substantiated for neglect. If a parent does have other reasons for not consenting. Outside of religious grounds, a hospital or CFSA can seek. Uh, a court orders overturn the parent's religious exemption or request.
Got it. Um, and has that, you have any knowledge of, of that have happened, happening before?
I do not have any knowledge of that happening.
Okay. Um. Can you explain, I think it's important, uh, why, um, it's important to treat all children and families equally rather than using different sets of rules? Depending on certain characteristics, characteristics such as parents stated religion?
Um, it's important because all children who are alleged to be abused or neglected should be investigated the same, whether or not a religious exemption exists. Uh, and so this repeal would give us the opportunity to investigate fully each case, uh, without considering religious exemption.
Um, appreciate that, and I, and I agree with you. Um, in your testimony, you mentioned that if the Love Act is enacted, CFSA will follow its. Existing investigation protocol for abuse and neglect allegations in medical neglect cases. Which already consider a parent's religious beliefs and their reasons for refusing medical treatment. What does that consideration currently look like?
So this consideration, uh, would look like the standard investigative process for any medical neglect that would come to our attention outside of religious exemption. We would take. Uh, the entire case under review, including the parent's reason for, uh, requesting this exemption. And we would, we would interview and investigate the, uh, hospital and their recommended treatment. Options and would apply the same standard.
Andrew, okay, okay. Um, so. I know in, in the testimony, you also said that the court, the, that court intervention may be necessary if parents. Um, denial of medical care is life-threatening or will result in severe harm to the child. Who makes the determination that lack of care is life-threatening or will result in severe harm? Is that CFSA? A medical professional or the court or all three?
Uh, kind of all three, but it is CFSA's role to investigate. It is the hospital's role to make the recommendations for treatment. And is the court's role to determine how the path forward, whether or not to appoint a medical, um. Uh, whether or not to, uh, overturn the parent's request to not treat, that is the court's role.
That's the course, okay. So yeah, it's like a trifecta of all three. I, I imagine that, but, um, I, I, I think, and I think that's the only way it can. It could actually, uh, go happen. Um, I want to. Go to. I'll go to Mr. Ibrahim. Um, Mr. Ibrahim, um, I want to ask you, in pre-hearing responses, CFSA. Uh, estimated using data from the American Community Survey that a hundred and seventy-seven and forty-two families would be newly eligible. For the grandparent subsidy program and close relative caregiver program respectively. In your testimony, you said that the agency cannot guarantee funding for every new eligible applicant under three hundred percent threshold. How many more applicants does CFSA currently have funding for?
So we are still running internal analysis on that. Um, we don't have specifics right now that we can share at this time.
Okay, and if additional appropriations are needed in the fiscal year. Twenty-five, gotta work ahead, year twenty-five budget, would the agency need only the amount for the increased number of payments? Or would the agency also need additional funds to expand the administration of the program that has more applicants and participants?
I would say the latter.
Okay. And can you, um, I guess, give that number to us when, whenever you have it? The earlier the better.
Yes.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. Um, I'm going to now turn to my, I have more questions, but I'm gonna turn to my colleague, Councilmember Parker for a round of questions.
Thank you, Chief of Staff.
Thank you, Chief of Staff, Torres Price. Uh, and I loved hearing that you're a War Five resident. I must say, there is a significant
Okay.
Number, there's a significant number of executive members that are War Five residents. Um, so thrilled to have you. I just wanted to better understand the process of a family being deemed in, uh, neglect of a child due to this religious um, exception, and I'm here, you say, there are no cases that you're aware of where that exception has been applied, but referencing the three entities, C F S A, the hospital, and the courts that you reference, walk me through what that might look like. So, a child and mom and dad are at the hospital. The hospital or the doctor says, "We recommend X." The parents say, "We're not going to do X." Then, does the hospital call C F S A? And you then, I'm imagining, conduct your recommendation. If you could just walk me through that process of how those three interplay, the hospital, C F S A, and the courts, and who ultimately gets to make that final decision around deeming that family in neglect?
So, yeah, so, um, yes, the hospital, if they felt that this, this treatment was necessary for this child, would call C F S A's hotline and say, "We believe this child is being neglected. They're refusing medical treatment." C F S A would assess the impact and the weight of the decision that the parent is making versus what the hospital, uh, staff is recommending.
And pause you right there, and based on you all's testimony, that initial investigation would happen within twenty-four hours of that call from the hospital? Or is that a different process?
I'm looking at hotline investigation.
Yes.
So, it would be initiated within twenty-four hours, so we would be responding out and, um, starting our investigative process regarding the allegation of medical neglect.
Okay, sorry.
No problem. Again, we would assess the case for abuse and neglect like we would any other case. Uh, we would also hear the hospital staff or treating physicians' recommendation, um, and then take all of the findings to the court, who would make the final decision.
So, C F S A would go to the court, got it? The courts or the judge would make a determination, yes, this family is deemed in neglect, and then C F S A, I'm imagining, would then go through its process of removing the child from said family if that was deemed appropriate by the courts.
Appropriate. I'd like to point out also, the court has their own appeal process, say that we came to the conclusion that we did not feel neglect was present. Uh, they too have their own body that they can petition the court and, uh, uh, appoint a, a medical decision maker.
Okay, and this may be an unfair question. I'm not sure if you have the number in front of you, but do you have a, a number or a sense of how many of those hospital calls C F S A is receiving?
I don't have that, but I can get that.
Okay, that would be helpful, and so just to juxtapose that number, and you're saying we don't really have any known religious exemptions, uh, would be helpful. A, a quick follow-up there, school vaccines, which are highly controversial, uh, while some may not necessarily say it's based on religious views, people have views on a range of things. Would, would a child not receiving vaccines because the parents have a view about said vaccines trigger this process? Or it can only be triggered if a doctor were to say the child is in harm's way?
Anything could trigger the process of alleged, uh, medical neglect, so I think that, again, we would take the case in its entirety into consideration, um, and follow.
Let me ask another way. Um, I guess what I'm getting at is do these reports of potential health neglect, I'm assuming is what it would be classified as, only come from a hospital setting, or can a teacher call and say, "I have a, a kid that is not receiving their measles vaccination or their flu shot, and I think they should be investigated," and it seems like you were gonna jump in?
I just wanted to point out that, um, no, that if, the only concern is that the parent is not, um, immunizing their child. That is not, um, reason for us to investigate that family. Um, it does, however, cause concern because some school, the schools require immunizations or a religious exemption. And so, if the family is not filling out the required forms and the child's not allowed to be in school, that means that they have unexcused absences.
Which would trigger another process.
Correct.
I got you. So, that is helpful. So, uh, the health neglect statute is not triggered by a, a child not receiving annual vaccinations?
No, that, that specifically, no. And to your other question, yes, other, um, uh, members of the community besides a physician can call in a concern for medical neglect. So, if I give an example of maybe somebody at the school, a child is coming, um, has come to school and maybe has, has an injury, um, and the school speaks to the parent about it, and the parent doesn't go get medical care for that child, that school could call in a report of medical neglect because they, they're seeing the child has some sort of injury and the parent is not following through.
Okay, uh, that is super helpful. Um, I'm gonna move on in terms of the lengthening of the investigation period, uh, which seem, there seem to be testimony on both sides. Some saying, "This is great," and some saying, "Well, actually, we want fewer investigations and shorter investigations." It was interesting to me today, we heard advocates kind of saying what I've heard from C F S A, that we want more kids to stay with their families. Um, and I know that was a point of tension in the oversight hearings where some advocates were saying, "You should be doing more, uh, investigations." So, it just, it's interesting to see where people fall on that continuum. All of that said, um, the thirty-day window that is allowed now, it seems like there is an exception, and I, I wanted to come back to your testimony, uh, where you said, "However, it is allowed C F S A to complete an investigation involving a report of abuse or neglect at a group home, daycare setting, or other congregate care setting within sixty days." So, are those the only exceptions in the current statute that would allow C F S A to take sixty days? Or is there another exception that would allow?
No, that's, that is the only extent, the only exception in the current law.
Okay, so when I look at the pre-hearing data, and it was really helpful to see where you give a number for thirty-day investigations as well as a forty-five-day investigation, obviously, you all are tracking that.
Yes.
So, is that, am I to interpret that as just the overwhelming majority of, it's just taking longer, even though you're not allowed to take forty-five days, sheer capacity is resulting in you all taking longer?
Correct.
Got it. And I would imagine if a case that took forty-five days to investigate went to court, uh, the defendant might have a legal excuse or argument against C F S A. I, I guess what I'm getting at is, if you're already taking longer than thirty days, why do we need to amend the law? If you are in effect doing that anyway?
Right, so those, um, those investigations would be considered not in compliance with the law? And so, those
Opens a legal loophole, I'm imagining, for families that may be under investigation.
I'm not an attorney, so I can't speak to that, but, um, it is, we want to be able to be in compliance with the law.
I got you. Now, going back to those numbers, so seven hundred and fifty-three are, in fiscal year twenty-three are within thirty days, two thousand two hundred and ninety-four within forty-five days, that is a pretty significant number. Am I to read that as like a compounded number? Uh, let me ask that another way. Uh, the two thousand two hundred and ninety-four, does that include the seven hundred and fifty-three that were included within thirty days, or are these in addition to those seven hundred and fifty-three?
In addition to.
In addition to, so it's not even including those that would have been closed out?
Correct.
Got it. And just to make sure, I'm understanding, you would argue that longer investigation periods allow for more quality review. I'm persuaded by that argument. I know some of the advocates may disagree. What, why is it taking as long as it is? Is it the capacity, or is it the complexity of the cases? And I think you spoke to that in your testimony.
Um, so it's a combination, I think, of a few things. Uh, I can speak personally, I started off as a CPS investigator in two thousand and six, and what went into our investigation as a CPS social worker is way different than it is today. Um, we are having our social workers interview more collaterals, um, reaching out to the schools, getting medical documentation, getting school documentation, and it's just a more comprehensive, um, investigation as it was previous. So, our practice has changed, and what is expected, uh, of us as an agency and to serve the community has changed, but the timeframe from which we're able to do that has not changed in thirty years.
Understood. I have more questions, but I'm out of time, uh, so I will get to them in the next round. Thank you.
Um, just wanna parse this, parse out a little bit, so we have it for, uh, the, the committee record. So, I think in the pre-hearing questions, um, C F S A stated it completed forty-seven percent fewer investigations within thirty days in fiscal year twenty-three than fiscal year twenty-one. And so, I guess the question is, why is that our investigation is taking longer, or is C F S A conducting fewer investigations than they were two years ago?
Sorry, can you repeat that, because I'm not sure?
So, in the pre-hearing, uh, responses, and I, let me give you, I can give you the, probably the, the number. Uh, C F S A stated that it completed forty-seven percent fewer investigations within thirty days in fiscal year twenty-three than in fiscal year twenty-one, if you look at question three of the pre-hearing questions. There was like fourteen, eighteen in fiscal year twenty-one, and then seven hundred and fifty-three in twenty-three.
Sorry? Um, that were, I, I'm gonna have to ask you to repeat it again, because I'm not
So, if you go to, um, question three of pre-hearing questions, in fiscal year twenty-three, the num, the number is seven hundred and fifty-three?
Yes.
And fiscal year twenty-one, it was one thousand four hundred and eighteen. Um, and so, I'm asking sort of, uh,
What the difference?
Yeah, what the difference is, is it, is it taking longer, or is C F S A actually conducting fewer investigations than they were two years ago?
No, um, I think one of the major issues are the major reasons between those two years is also our staffing, our vacancies, um, that have changed, uh, it's much different in twenty-one than it is in twenty-three.
On a positive or a negative?
A negative.
Oh, a negative, okay. Okay, um, and let me ask you this, in your, in your vast experience, what are the consequences of, of investigations not being completed within the current thirty-day deadline? Uh, and would those consequences be the same if investigations are not completed within the extended deadline?
So, I don't know necessarily if there's a consequence, but it allows for the investigator, so there's really only a positive towards it that allows the investigator more time within the legal timeframes to get an investigation complete. So, we don't close an investigation unless we deem that it's safe to close. And so, that's why you see investigations that linger past that thirty-day.
Yeah.
So, we are not compliance-driven to close within thirty days regardless of whether we completed our investigation. And my instruction to my staff is that we don't close out with a family until service needs are identified and received, and that we can deem that that's safe. And so, that's why you see the difference.
The difference in that, okay. In, uh, the pre-hearing responses, um, you all noted that C F S A's, uh, said extending the deadlines will improve the overall quality of investigations. And in our testimony, you spoke about how the current thirty-day deadline does not consider the complexities that certain investigations require. Can you speak more about the relationship between the length and the quality of an investigation? And what are some examples of case complexities that can be explored within the extended deadlines that cannot be done under the current deadline?
So, um, specifically, what comes to mind is, um, our fatalities. Um, they are very complex in whether there is abuse or neglect that we're trying to determine. Um, that involves us working with the hospitals, the medical examiner, and, um, the Metropolitan Police Department. So, when it's just one agency working with a family, it's, you know, a certain amount of collaboration, but when you have multiple government agencies working to try and assess if abuse or neglect occurred with that family, it does take longer because each agency has their own protocols on how they investigate. Um, another example is our sex trafficking, um, population. Um, they unfortunately do not like to engage with government agencies or the Metropolitan Police Department, so it takes us longer to engage them, to build that rapport and that trust, to be able to, um, see what actual service needs are, um, what needs they or the family needs. And so, it's, it's just the engagement piece. And then, the same thing with our institutional investigations, which we already have the sixty-day window, but we're working with O S I, um, in those investigations.
And one of the things, and I appreciate that, and, and that's just a complexity that the layperson doesn't know about, but even those who are, you know, in government work may not know about, so I appreciate that. Um, can you, uh, you talked about so, so, social workers, um, have been required to obtain more information during investigations, but the deadlines for investigations have not, uh, changed to account for those additional requirements. Um, can you tell me some examples of information that social workers are now required to obtain that were not required um, when the thirty-day deadline was set?
Yes, um, so, it's, it's two things. It's getting the information and then documenting it. If you look at previous years, and I don't even want to bring it up, but if you look at case records from previous years where, um, there have been even court involvement, it's very little documentation. So, we are responsible for not only interviewing those, um, interviewing the, the child, the parents, any household members, relatives, um, neighbors that may have information. We're also reaching out to the schools to get, um, attendance records as well as academic performance. If there are academic, academic performance issues, we're working with the school. How can we assist the family with improving, um, the academics? It's just a number of different entities that we are, um, engaging to make an appropriate disposition for the family. We don't want to just say, you know, walk in and not have evidence to support whether we are substantiating or not finding abuse or neglect to occur. So, we need to make sure that we have all that information, that it shows that we have evidence to prove our disposition and have that in the record.
Yeah, I, I think it's critical, coming from the criminal justice space, just having documentation is so important, and it is scary, the sort of, you, when people leave, uh, uh, an agency and all the knowledge goes with them, and there was no documentation, it, it, it just is a nightmare, so I think that is important. Um, and what, how do you, just, I'm just curious, what is your new document, you have a documentation, um, what are you using to, to create, create that documentation?
So, we, we currently use a faces system.
Okay.
Um, but we are getting, some setting that, and we are getting a new system called Stand.
Got it, yeah, awesome. Um, in your testimony, you said that C F S A is planning on proposing additional language to the bill to sunset the family assessment differential response approach?
Yes.
I think I got that right?
Yep.
A practice the agent, the agency discontinued in two thousand and nineteen. Um, can you talk more about why C F S A, um, stopped conducting the family assessments, um, four years ago? What is the data you cited that indicates better outcomes, um, from CPS investigations than family assessments? Um, and then, the last part of that is, when can the committee expect to receive the additional amendment language?
Uh, okay, so I can speak to the family assessment sunsetting. Um, one of the major issues that we found was that, um, families are, were able to decline. It was a voluntary process.
Mm-hmm.
And so, um, you know, we were allowed five days to be able to engage, and, um, if families didn't want to engage in the family assessment, then they didn't have to. And what we found is, there was more, um, there's a more of a probability that they would be a repeat maltreatment called into the hotline because those issues weren't addressed.
Oh.
And, yes, so, um, we do have some data, and I, um, we can provide that, I think, um, but when we were looking, um, uh, I talked about the acceptability of investigations. We did, um, we did some Q A on the family assessments, and we did, did not find that, um, the family assessment path made families safer. And in fact, the investigations pathway did, and so, it just didn't work for our community.
Got it, got it. Um, and when, when can the committee expect to receive the additional amendment language?
Um.
Soon, very soon is what, is what I'm getting, got it. Um, earlier, we asked from, heard from some advocates that it, that the extended deadline could lead to intrusive family policing and more kids being removed from families, uh, and that was a little difficult to hear. Um, what is your response to those concerns?
So, the only change in our investigative process will be the length of time that the social worker has to complete the investig, those investigative tasks. Um, it will not have anything to do with the number of children that are coming into care. It will have nothing to do with the amount of referrals. I did hear, I, I do believe one witness said that there was concerns about more, um, more people being investigated, that it, it just has to do with the length of time that the social worker has to gather the information, document into faces, and provide an investigation summary for closure.
Got it, and I know you all heard some of the concerns, um, from, uh, two of the witnesses, just about how it felt. Um, is there anything you can speak to as like ways C F S A is improving to make that feel less
Intrusive.
Intrusive for the families? Intrusive for the families? I mean, everybody knows what intrusive process, even, even if not, I know it's not similar to this at all, but like even when you going, trying to get a mortgage for a house, you know how intrusive that is? And how stressful that is? Imagine that being your, like, you being a parent and that being your child, like, that is like the ultimate level of anxiety and stress. So what can, what is it that you all are implementing to sort of, in understanding how much anxiety, how much stress? And probably the amount of just emotions that they're going through in that moment, um, to alleviate some of that, that pressure?
Yeah, I definitely validate their concerns and their expressions about how that feels. Um, and I do think that, uh, just ongoing training that we have, um, on engagement and working with families, um, especially with our newer social workers. Um, I do, I did hear very much the young lady who, um, talked about being a young mom and having to go through the process and how, um, traumatizing that was. And I do believe that, um, our social workers do understand that. And so while I'm saying the forty-five days, we have up to the forty-five days. If we go in and assess the situation that there's no abuse or neglect occurring, we're not gonna continue to be intrusive into that family's life. And so it's more on those instances where we do have concerns about abuse or neglect. What services can we put in place, um, to be able to, um, alleviate those safety concerns and be able to close out the investigation? Or if needed, open an in-home family case, um, to provide ongoing, um, support.
Okay.
So I do, I do empathize with that and, um, I will bring that actually back to my staff.
Right.
Um, regarding kind of what that feels like.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, turning it over to Councilmember Parker.
Okay, I wanna come back to the investigations. So I'm hearing you say staffing vacancies play a large part in why there are fewer investigations conducted within thirty days. But I would imagine overall, am I to interpret that as social workers or staffing vacancies generally?
No, yeah, that's the difference between the num- the numbers that, in the years is the staff, a social work vacancy. So those are the, the social workers are the investigators doing the, uh-
And do you have those numbers? And if not, that's okay, you could follow up with it.
I can get them to you.
Okay, that would be helpful. We know there is a shortage across the government in terms of social workers. But I think making clear this point could be really powerful for other legislation that is before the council, trying to create more pathways for folk to become social workers. Um, I will also say, and I may get in trouble for saying this, that while I heed the concerns from folk around not including more families in, in the investigation process. In some respects, I would rather CFSA investigate and make sure kids are okay and safe. And so while we wanna keep families together, we wanna ensure that fewer kids are entering our system. I don't necessarily see more investigations as inherently bad thing. Now, to the testimony we heard in terms of about the experience that might have or the impact that might have on someone, I'm sympathetic to that. Um, and so that, that, I'm just saying that that is a tension I'm experiencing, cause I wanna make sure the kids are all right. And if that means that you have to do an investigation, then do it. So we can sleep well at night to make, to, to know that we're not having a kid in harm's way.
Right. Um, I also just wanted to add, um, I was reminded, um, that we did to kind of counterbalance the lack of social workers that we have, that we have invested in hiring more family support workers in the agency who are assigned to, um, either one to two to each investigative unit. And they support the social workers investigative task. So they are kind of paired together to-
The operational-
Yes.
Task that a social worker shouldn't be using their time.
Correct.
I got you.
We've done that to try and-
I got you. Okay, now, uh, I know the director is here and this may be bet- better suited for him. But I'm gonna ask about truancy, and this is a conversation we had. Um, it's a big issue in the district and it's been a big issue. Chairperson Louis George, I don't know if you wanna do anything if the director joins.
Oh, you want me to swear man?
Yes, I, or-
Did you finish your question on truancy?
No, we could keep going. Uh-
Well, you finish your question before you answer that, well, if he, if he needs to.
So I just wanna walk down this line because truancy is a big issue. By no means am I saying take kids away from their parents. But there does seem to be a missing link, and that is not necessarily the fault of CFSA. I brought this up with the city administrator. And he essentially said, you know, CFSA is overwhelmed. And what your testimony, uh, points to is in fact that the agency is a bit overwhelmed just given the capacity constraints. Can you walk me through what is the process from a teacher saying a kid is not showing? I'm the math teacher. The kid is not in my classroom ten days. I've marked them absent and go.
Yes. So I just wanna make one thing clear. CFSA investigates educational neglect, not truancy.
Okay, so pause right there. Because having been a member of the State Board of Education, having been a, a person that weighed in on the rules for OSI, the interpretation from that standpoint is that someone's investigating why little Johnny is not showing up to school. And what I'm hearing CFSA say is, well, we are only focused on neglect. So from your perspective, who then does investigate where little Johnny has been for ten-plus days?
So for children ages five to thirteen, it is CFSA. Fourteen and up, it's OEG.
Give me those ages one more time. So five to thirteen.
Five to thirteen.
It's CFSA.
Yes, and fourteen to seventeen would be, um, obviously Attorney General.
Okay. But in order to determine whether or not there's neglect, there has to be an initial pre-screen as I understand it.
Yeah. So the schools are, um, required to, to create, uh, educational neglect report through our portal. When, I think you said Johnny misses ten on, eh, ten full unexcused days of school. So they are required by law to do that.
Yes.
Our educational neglect triage team then receives that, that information and looks at impact on the child. If there's no impact on like academics, then we, I'm sorry, then there's not impact on, uh, academics or well-being and there's no other concerns, then that is not something that CFSA would investigate.
Okay. Uh, but how is that possibly determined?
From the school?
So the school is in that report suggesting this student has missed fifteen days of school. However, we're not concerned about their academics.
Correct. It, it's a very, if you go through the portal, we ask specific questions and also ask the questions regarding, um, uh, efforts that the school has made to engage the family and different programs. And so, um, I'd be happy to provide the guidance that we have for schools and reporting.
That would be really helpful. And what I'm getting at, and this is not necessarily CFSA's responsibility, but there are, is a large swath of kids that are just missing. And no one's coordinating, talking, communicating, finding them. And we know that a, a reason why we're seeing an uptick in youth and juvenile violence in the city is because they're not in school. Now, I hear you loud and clearly saying, well, we're concerned about neglect. And I'm thinking about the kid that maybe come to school, dressed fine, eating well, acting normal, just not showing up to school. And the question then, and I'll ask this in our education, educator cluster hearings, like, who's doing that investigation? And my concern is no one. Because if it's not CFSA in this city, it seems like no one's conducting investigations for young people. Um, between CFSA and the Office of the Attorney General, is there any communication between your two respective agencies and your investigations into you? So five to thirteen for you all, and then over the age of thirteen for the Office of Attorney General? Are you all sharing data or trends at all?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Um, let me get back on the topic. Uh, but I think that is a big issue for the city. Director, maybe I didn't need you after all. Uh, but you can hang, hang around. Um. Can you walk me through, similar to what I was asking about the medical referrals, the investigation process? So um, I'm thinking of a, a, an example. There is a eight-year-old in Ward Five where neighbors are saying at all hours of the night, this eight-year-old is roaming the streets, getting into trouble, being mischievous. Someone calls CFSA and makes a referral. Can you just walk me through what that investigative process will look like?
Certainly. Uh, yeah, we would definitely be at an eight-year-old walking around at night unsupervised. We would be concerned about supervision, um, eh, or the lack of supervision on the parent, rather. And so the investigative process is we receive the referral, it's screened in, we call the reporter back to get more information. We're gonna go to that young man's school to see if he's at school, to interview him. We're gonna interview the parents, um, any neighbors that can co- corroborate what the report's saying. Um, and, and address what the concern is. Is it that mom is working night shift and he doesn't have that supervision? Is it mom has put all the locks on the doors, but he's going out the window? We, we ascertain kind of what, where the supervision issue is, and then would put services in place to address those concerns.
And that process may take over thirty days. I understood that. Director, I will ask this question because earlier I was just trying to get clear in effect. The investigations are taking longer. This is by lengthening it per the law is more of a legal protection, I would imagine for CFSA. Are there other benefits by lengthening the investigation period by law? As it relates to CFSA?
I'm gonna pause. Director Matthews, will you just raise your right hand for me? Uh, do you swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give, the Committee on Facilities and Family Services, is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm owed about five seconds, Chairperson.
Um, noted.
No, uh, so thank you for the question, um, Council, uh, Councilman Parker. Um, in terms of expanding the investigation, uh, really what it does, it's all about quality. And I think what I want people to understand, because I did listen to, uh, the public witnesses, this is definitely not about doing more investigations, but it is about the investigations that we do. Um, and as Deputy Muffelow talked about, our direction has been, regardless of whether it's thirty days, forty-five days, we're not gonna close an investigation unless it's safe to do so with acceptability. That means also investigating to determine whether abuse neglect has occurred, putting services in place. And interestingly enough, the example that you just gave around the young boy walking around, eight-years-old, uh, what I would like to say is that, let's say we did find out that the young man was unsupervised, where our role is really to work with the parent to put a plan in place, right? Because although he may be unsupervised, the question is, is that a pattern? Because the pattern may determine whether you substantiate for a lack of supervision. Even if you set, even if you substantiate for lack of supervision, it doesn't mean that we're gonna separate that child. But it does mean that there's been a pattern that we've seen. Maybe there have been two or three hotline calls prior. How long ago has that been? Um, and if it's the mom that's working, it's not what we call intentional. And so that's how comprehensive investigations look at, the investigator looks at, is it the intent of the parent, right? Or is it because the parent may lack basic resources to ensure that this child is supervised? So that's how, to me, the complexity of investigations can look, can look. And that's why sometimes it may take longer to really, um, unravel what really is factual versus things that we can put in place as a support to support the family. We've had examples like that to where even the neighbor will say, okay, well, I can provide supervision, but it may not have been where the parent engaged the neighbor or if it's other family members.
I, I think the other part that I didn't talk about is during the investigative process, what sometimes makes things complex is we think we're going in for a lack of supervision, but we go into the home and we find other people out. And so we're not, I wanna make it very clear that we're not just assessing that allegation for which it's called, for which it's called. And we're assessing the well-being of the family and what are the needs of the family. A lot of times in the spit, in the, um, simple that was given, um, where maybe mom is working and we need to figure out, okay, we can watch Johnny at night and we hold a family team meeting. So we have a whole family team coordination where neighbors can, church folk come and are able to sit down and say, that's what the needs of the family are, who can help and create a family plan. So that we are addressing what the needs are. And so that's what makes things a little bit more, it's ne- it's never just what you see on paper.
Understood. Thank you. Uh, I believe I'm way over time. Are we doing another round, Chairperson?
Do you need another round?
I, maybe not a full round.
Okay, you'll get an additional five-minute round.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, um, I want to, uh, actually, I think this would be great for the record to just, for CFSA to just say around truancy and, and what role CS, CFSA plays. What is in fact considered educational neglect for the public?
So educational neglect is when there are absences that are impacting the child's academic.
Right. So that is if a child is missing school and then also failing in a number of, of, of said classes.
Uh, there's an impact on their academic performance.
Their performance. And is that based on just, uh, grades, your in, in-class grades and also test scores?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Um. Um, and, um, as far as the educational neglect goes, uh, do we all, do you all have the ability to inform the school? We've done an investigation and, uh, well, we've done an investigation. I don't think you can give the conclusion, but you can give, give the school notification.
Yes.
Okay. Um, appreciate that. Um, on the topic of other topics, um, speaking these in, um, the city administrator, uh, presented to the council about, uh, the soft launch of our warm line. Um, how does a soft, the soft launch from our warm line? Um, how will this impact the ecosystem? Or what are we looking to impact in our ecosystem for, for children, um, in, in the district?
Uh, thank you for that question. Um, first, I'm excited that we've been able to successfully soft launch, uh, the two-one-one warm line. And so I think listening to many of the public witnesses that even fear a CPS investigation, I think this is a pathway that if we can increase public trust, that families can raise their hand to say, hey, I need help. I need support out of fear, you know, keeping away from fear of something detrimental happening to their child, where there's, the child's gonna be removed. I think we have some work to do in building public trust in residents to say, hey, there's a whole other phone number you can call.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you need support, that's with utility assistance, that's with clothing, that's with some of those concrete needs that we know families need.
Mm-hmm.
But because of how our system was structured, it would become a hotline call and what that hotline call could result in. I think the beauty of the soft launch too is that if those families need support, instead of a CPS investigator showing up, uh, we have the collaboratives that are gonna be community responders.
Right.
They will be the ones, not government employees, they'll be the ones showing up on the scene if needed to ask, how can I help? How can I assist? And to provide that information. So it's really going to shift to me how social services is delivered here in the district in that way.
Absolutely. And we, we hear from so many families who just, who echo the need and the want for this. And as we, um, and I wanna be clear, it's a public, it's a soft launch, so it's not gonna fix the district's issues uh, in a day or in a month, uh, but it is a progress, a, a progression, uh, to get us there. As far as who's, who's taking those two-on-one calls, who are the call takers?
So the two-on-one call takers are actually CFSA employees. They are co-located, uh, with the Office of Unified Communications. Because it's kind of shared between two-on-one and three-on-one. And so, uh, what we've done is hired staff. Uh, we do have some staff that are currently being trained. And, you know, just so the public understands, the level of training that they receive is gonna be pretty vast because they have to be, uh, equipped with understanding community resources. They have to also understand CFSA policy around child protection and safety. Because if there perhaps are calls to the two-on-one that may warrant hotline, we need to make sure that we're not leaving kids unsafe. They also have to be familiar with three-on-one and all the technological pieces. Uh, they're gonna be trained in motivational interviewing. Um, because what we wanna make sure is that the, the user has a, what we call a positive experience. Um, we know oftentimes people can call hotlines, they can sometimes get frustrated. So really one of our number one priorities is to ensure positive customer service. And so they are CFSA employees.
Great. I'm, I'm happy they're CFSA employees because your employees just have, um, the skills, the education, the understanding, the experience, um, and the heart for the work that, that it requires. So, um, thank you for allowing me to go off on, uh, that for, uh, for a moment. Um, my last and final questions are just, um, I was very glad to see CFSA believes seeking to establish a waiver of subsidies received under these programs from counting its income is worth exploring with the Department of Human Services. Um, just wanting to know if you all can commit to meeting with DHS about this by the end of the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-four and report back to the committee with an update.
I would definitely commit to that. I actually have an upcoming meeting with Directors Alleninger. So, um, I will, uh, raise that issue with her.
Perfect. Um, and then in the pre-hearing responses, uh, CFSA said the agency will begin tracking the number of applicants denied because their income was above two hundred percent but below three hundred percent poverty level. because their income was above 200%, but below 300% poverty level, um, for both quo- programs in fiscal year 24. Um, can CFSA provide the committee with these numbers on a quarterly basis, beginning with the quarter one at the end of December?
I believe we're working to do that. Um, one of the things, just so that, you know, to make the council aware is there are some modifications, um, and upgrades that are needed with the actually online system today to pull the data in that way. So we are working on to do that. We could probably definitely provide how many denials. I think what we're trying to do is extract the reasons for that.
That's right. Um, that's, that's the helpful data that, that we all need to, to, uh, make any improvements. Um, I'm going to turn to my colleague, Councilman Parker, for a final round.
Okay, I'm going to come back to the truancy issue real quick. And Director, I know you're pulling data on this. But it just seems to me that we're left at the mercy of different LEAs if they deem it educational neglect, which would trigger your investigation. I just want to make sure I'm clear. So if they say yes, we believe it's educational neglect. Do you still would do your pre-screening if you deem it as a, so then you investigate? If they say no, they don't think it's educational neglect, can you just speak to what is CFSA's action thereafter?
Sure. I want to answer it this way, uh, Councilman Parker, is the school's role is not to determine educational neglect. That's our role. Um, I think what we're seeing in the data is that schools are reporting compliance based on the law. So as an example, and we can provide, we'll provide you like data. Um, I know the last pool that I saw from last year, roughly over 7,000 referrals that were received from Ed neglect. About 219 were actually investigated. And so what that tells us, the work that we do to actually assess every referral, what you will see is that it's not necessarily neglect, but when we get involved, the parent will say, oh, well, we, uh, did not provide the documentation, whether we took them to the doctor on that day. Or we may have taken a vacation. There are some out of jurisdiction. Um, there are other reasons, um, they may have disenrolled the child and never told the school. When we provide that information to the school, then it's, it's screened out. When we investigate, oftentimes it's a symptom, as Deputy, uh, Mufflet talked about, of something else going on. So kids not in school can be a symptom of something else going on in the home. And then that, those things that we investigate to try to determine, well, why is the child absent? Because it could be impacting their academics, but it could be something else. Could it be housing as an issue? Could it be that the parent is suffering from substance use or mental health? So those are some of the things that we uncover. But when we receive each referral, we go through it. Um, again, as Deputy Mufflet talked about, we reach out to the school to verify. We may re- we reach out to the parent.
Yeah.
And just to get more information to determine, has neglect occurred or not? But oftentimes, most of the referrals are due to, uh, reporting based on the compliance of the law.
Because the kid is not in a classroom.
Correct.
And it's making me think that we need to rethink that process. And perhaps CFSA should not be the first step in that process. And it should be O C. Because if you're telling me seven, there are 7,000 referrals and we're only seeing 219 actual cases of neglect. That means 6,000 and some odd cases are not proper, properly being followed up on. And I'm sensitive to the situations where maybe the family took a vacation a- across seas or there is a medical condition that keeps the kid out of school. But I know for a fact there are other instances where kids just aren't going to school. Um, and this is something that we're wrestling with as a city. Let me get back to ta- uh, to the focus. Uh, the two-on-one employees from CFSA, are those social workers or are those other general employees?
Those are other, uh, general employees.
Okay, great. I'm, I'm also excited about the program. One thing, uh, Mr. Administrator Ibrahim, um, that I wanted to underscore was the waiver process. And Director, you could weigh in here. There is language from an Illinois state law that, uh, I can provide um, that may be helpful as you're engaging with DHS on this. The, our bill, I believe, says the mayor shall choose state options and seek all necessary federal approvals or waivers to implement this section, end quote. Uh, but it doesn't give more direction. And there is an Illinois state bill example that I'll make sure you all have uh, that will ensure that families aren't penalized for receiving these extra benefits because that is not what we want. Uh, Administrator Ibrahim, um, in my last minute, can you just talk about how you're educating grandparents or loved ones through the process around the subsidy program in general?
Sure. Um, I definitely think that is one of our big priorities right now in our kind of reboot. Um, we just literally just had a quarterly, uh, kinship, uh, program advisory meeting uh, where we were talking about how we want to get ahead of some of these, um, pain points that applicants are experiencing. So, um, we want to kind of create opportunities to have one-on-one office hours, uh, create informational workshops for them to come in and ask the questions in, ahead of time. Uh, and also kind of walk them through the process to make sure that they have the right forms, the right documentation, they know how to navigate the website. Uh, so we are building those processes into our program design currently. Uh, and we, we expect by the end of the first quarter, we are ready to, uh, implement all of those activities that, uh, we're going to be introducing for the community to take advantage of.
Nice. All right. So I'm glad to hear that. Yes.
Could I add to that?
I'm over time, but yes.
Yeah. Administrator's been very humble in his response. Um, but I think from, from prior testimonies, what we've heard and even in terms of like the delay in receiving a subsidy. And what, um, uh, Sheriff Dean was speaking of is something that we saw successful in the educational space in terms of having office hours. We're going to create office hours for those caregivers that are applying. Because we realized that some of them may not be as technologically savvy, that they can ask questions. Okay, here's where your application is in the process. Here's documents that are currently missing. And so we figure that that may be a help to kind of reduce the average time for also, um, relatives who are applying for the grandparent or post-reliance care.
Nice. Um, it, Chairperson Louis George, can I have another minute? I'm wrapping up.
Councilmember Frumman has joined us and would like to give a statement.
Okay, Frumman?
Yes.
Oh, nice.
You know, I, I, I'm going to use.
One minute.
Okay. Uh, and I'll wrap up. So one, I want to end on a note of praise for you all because I think as an agency, you all get beat up all the time and I think you're doing great work. So thank you for the very important work that you all are leading. I have one more quick follow-up on this truancy issue. So when you get those 7,000 referrals, are those social workers that are doing those pre-screens that lead to the 219 actual neglect follow-throughs?
No, we have a team of about nine family support workers.
And what would those people be doing otherwise? If, if we were to say, we're going to take this off a CFSA's caseload and we're going to give it to someone else that is probably better suited to do that pre-initial screening, who, who are those nine people that are doing those truancy screens?
So they, it's a dedicated unit specifically for Ed neglect referrals because most of our referrals come from the educational, uh.
I got you.
And so they actually go through each referral. And so they are also trained to understand the importance of, um, safety and abuse neglect. And so those that do rise to the level after what we call an assessment period, um, they will open or we will screen in for an investigation. So.
The question was, what would those people be doing if we didn't?
Our FSWs?
Yeah, they would be supporting.
Oh, they would be supporting. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And then we may be able to speed up some of these investigations. No, because they're not social workers.
Well, no, because here, so because we receive so many referrals from education. So for instance, let's say that we didn't have a special dedicated unit. And then all referrals just would go all to our investigative units. Actually, I think it would be slower. Because you have to understand, we also have investigative units that are taking in other investigations from the city as well.
Okay, more to come on this. This is a problem we have to solve. But I want to thank you all, both for your testimony and your work. And I believe a lot of the rhetoric we're hearing now aimed at our young people is very much connected to the vision you have of keeping families whole, to be able to support young people and put them on the right path. So, uh, that is it for me. Thank you for your generosity, Chairperson Louis George.
Thank you, Councilmember Parker. Um, Councilmember Frumman, our War Three Councilmember, who is also a member of this committee, has joined us. Councilman Parker, I want to recognize you for, uh, opening statement and round of questions if you have them.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Chairwoman Louis George. I, I'll be very brief. I've, I've been able to dial in and out of this hearing between other things. Um, I, I am, uh, pleased to see the level of support for the legislation that's been proposed. One that has been a focus for me is the Grandparent and Caregiver Subsidy Eligibility Act and Amendment Act. And I take it, and I, I have not been here for all of the questioning, that the agency is supportive of that act. There is a question about funding and I think, uh, Chairwoman Louis George may have been asking about how we can anticipate what the funding requirements there would be. I do think it's, uh, I just want to go on record as thinking it's very important that we be able to implement this act and be able to support our, our caregivers who are supporting our kids. I have to believe that whatever the investment is there, that there will be large savings in other places. And it's the right thing to do. So I, I don't want to belabor it, but I did want to get on the record in strong support of that, that, uh, proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, uh, Councilmember Frumman, uh, for your support. And, and, uh, I know what a champion you are, advocate you are, especially for our seniors, uh, War Three community, but also throughout the city. Uh, so thank you for that. Um, at this time, I want to thank our panelists, uh, for your very thorough testimony. Um, and what I thought was a very robust, uh, hearing and conversation. Uh, thank you again to my colleague, uh, Councilmember Parker, for his, uh, staff and his leadership. I want to thank my staff, Sebastian Wyman, who worked really hard on preparing for this hearing. Uh, and my committee director, uh, as well, Will Perkins, ensuring that we had a good, uh, hearing. Uh, so with that, um, I want to remind witnesses, if you have not submitted your testimony, to please submit your testimony. Uh, the record for this closes on Thursday, November 9th at 5:00 P. M. Uh, you can send your testimony to facilities@dc council.gov or you can upload it to the system. Uh, with that, the time is 1:51 P. M. And this hearing is concluded. Thank you.